Madam Chair, might I also respond to that if that's okay?
Is that okay Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Whether it's high ground or somebody else, I'm just going to say and I would advocate for us because I think that I can share a lot of successes that we've had over the last seven years. You need representation at the Capitol. The vultures are circling. There are billion dollar hedge funds operating on the river trying to transport your river water. There are legislators in central Arizona who just last week held a session where they talked about getting access to a transfer market for groundwater across the state, across basins. That scenario is one that Mojave County and the rural communities lose every time because of wealth, right? Median income here in Mojave County is $26,000 a year. Median income in Maricopa County and Queen Creek where this is coming from is $42,000 a year. So keep that in mind as you have a conversation about whether or not you need representation. I think the answer to that is yes.
I don't disagree with that. It's just that it's frustrating to see all the work that Supervisor Linganfelder and your company has put in even though I've been critical about it all the time to have it turned down by our own people when you were so close to getting it through. That's what bothered me. That's all I have Madam Chair.
Okay, any other questions Mister Ponder?
Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise, I have asked Ron Gould to do the invocation and Supervisor Linganfelder to lead us in the pledge.
If you feel led, please join me in prayer. Lord, we thank you and praise you today for this great nation that you've given us, Lord, this experiment in self-government. Please give us the wisdom to run the county effectively and properly, Lord. We have many employees that have dangerous jobs, Lord, keep them safe and bring them home safely to their family's loving arms. In Jesus's name I pray, amen.
You'll join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, official business. Oh, I'm so sorry. Official business come before the board discussion of pending or contemplated litigation claims and demands, Mr. Espin.
Good morning, nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, committee and our legislative reports, we'll start with Supervisor Bishop.
Thank you Chairman Angus, I traveled to Flagstaff to attend the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission meeting. It was there that I helped solicit over $285,000 in grant money for the county attorney's office under the victims group. And I'll continue to lobby for grants for Mojave County until December 31st of this year. That concludes my report.
Thank you Supervisor Linganfelder.
Thank you Madam Chair. As of today, we're still waiting on the federal district court judge Lombardi to issue his judgment on the Greenstone to Queen Creek Colorado River Water Transfer. I'm not sure how that's going to play out, but we're certainly watching that very closely. We're also waiting for the Seven Basin State Reconsultation on the Colorado River to start ramping up as well as this year it's going to involve the tribes, which is new and of course Mexico and we need to make sure that we're at that table as well. No word on the special session of the legislature to discuss water issues at this point either, so I'm not sure that's going to happen, but if not, we'll just set our sights on next session, thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Gould.
Nothing today Madam Chairman.
Supervisor Johnson.
Nothing Madam Chair.
Okay, we did have a primary election last Tuesday. I want to thank the county for doing a great job as always and I want to congratulate the winners from both political parties. Some of us move on to the general election, but a few were elected at the primary. They do not have any opposition in the general. One of them is here today, I believe, Rich Letman, he was elected to take District Two Supervisor. You want to stand up so everyone gets to see you? And I believe that the other people in this room are going on to the general election, so we'll wait on that one. And that's all I have today. Lobbyist report from high ground.
Madam Chair, members for the record Nick Ponder from High Ground Public Affairs, thanks for the opportunity. Just to follow up on what Supervisor Linganfelder said with respect to the special session, as you know, the legislative session ended in mid-June. Since that time, we have held somewhere in the range of about five meetings, either with the governor's office or with separate legislators to discuss next steps in the process. There was an offer out there for a special session that would have needed to happen by August 12th or so to make some changes to an AMA that was passed down in the Douglas area. That proposal was otherwise rejected by the representative from that area, Representative Griffin. However, I can say that Senator Kerr is interested in the opportunity of doing a special session on rural groundwater as well as the governor's office and several other legislators. So we continue to have conversations to try and finalize what that deal might look like and ensure that it benefits Mojave County and we are, meaning myself, at the table for those conversations. With respect to river water issues, as Supervisor Linganfelder said, there is the reconsultation that will be coming up here in the next year or so. The state, the lower basin states provided a proposal on March 6th. Their most recent consultation, recon consultation committee meeting was on June 10th. That meeting was largely about modeling the river, nothing more other than to advise that they have not received a response yet from the Bureau of Reclamation on their proposal. Suffice to say, the upper basin states were not supportive of the lower basin state proposal because the upper basin states would have to take cuts off the river at anything above 1.5 million acre feet should the river continue to fall. So that's my update, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ponder? Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you Madam Chair. We had Jamie Kelly was asking, we were here last time giving us an update and it seemed like she was dancing around a lot of them. We spent around a million and a half dollars so far on legislation or trying to get legislation through and with the Republicans controlling the House and the Senate, we had legislation that came forward the year before and this year when it came forward, we should have got it passed. How come we couldn't get the legislation then because now I guess the governor was supporting it?
Yeah, Madam Chair Supervisor Johnson, great question. I did listen to the presentation from July 15th, heard your question, had that prepared for my remarks for the agenda item, but I'm happy to answer them now. So when we go back to 2023, we had a legislative proposal that was sponsored by both Majority Leader Biasucci and Majority Leader Borelli. During that year, we had meetings with stakeholders on some of their concerns with our proposal. We made amendments to that proposal at the direction of Mr. Biasucci. That I think was a good proposal to start off with. To answer your question, really what happened was I lobbied the governor's office and the Department of Water Resources to use our ending point from 2023 as a starting point for the conversations in the interim for the Governor's Water Policy Council. I believe that was a successful effort, however, political lines were drawn and unfortunately, because the governor's office was supportive of it, it was perceived to be a more progressive approach. It was not, in fact, we took significant number of recommendations from the Farm Bureau, the Cattlemen, et cetera. And so in an area of hyper polarized politics, it was seen as a progressive effort. It was not again, but ultimately those lines were drawn and it was very difficult to get something passed. And in fact, Mr. Borelli and Mr. Biasucci declined to sponsor that negotiated proposal at the end of, or at the beginning of this legislative session.
Supervisor Linganfelder is running progressive bills for Mojave County down there?
Did you repeat that?
Said Supervisor Linganfelder is running progressive bills for the county down there.
I don't think I'm running progressive bills, I think when you look at the history, Representative Regina Cobb first introduced the bill on groundwater in rural areas in 2016 in Mojave County. Legislators have introduced the bill or bills every year thereafter, except with the exception of 2023 because our problem hasn't gone away, it's only gotten worse. We've also, from Mojave County and our legislators have issued bills to try to prevent Colorado River Water Transfers and those have not received hearings either. I think as Supervisor Gould would probably know, probably 80% of what you do down at the legislature is not just trying to get a bill passed, but you're playing defense and trying to have unfavorable legislation that would impact you negatively not pass. So I think there's value in that also.
I guess maybe Supervisor Linganfelder can help me with this. Obviously, I was making jest of you running progressive bills, but now if our bills are being seen as progressive at the legislature, do we need to continue this?
I think at Mojave, that's a good question, I think at Mojave County, we can ask ourselves a decision. In Mojave County, our three major groundwater basins are the Wallopie at the Sacramento, the Detrital, we all know that. We all know that the INA, well, the Wallopie Valley Groundwater Basin, which supports the Kingman area population both inside and outside city limits and a little over 80 businesses now in the industrial park and they want to expand another 1,800 acres. They're going to be building an interchange which ADOT is bidding out right now called the Rancho Senta Fai project and that's going to be a new main access to the industrial park, but it's also going to open up that entire east bench of Kingman to new commercial, industrial, residential. I think the biggest benefactor of that is going to be us at Mojave County with all those new property tax. So we need to say to ourselves, do we want to fight, continue to fight for new common sense, local control tools? Somebody needs to turn off their laser. And do we want to, do we want to continue to fight for new tools to give this board and others that live here in rural the option to have some sort of tools to manage, whether it be corporate farms in Saudi Arabia or UAE, Central California, or hydrogen fuels production, or this or that, whatever it is. Now we're looking at a pumped storage project, do we want to have tools to try to manage that for future generations or just we want to say lazy fair, you know, laissez faire, it's open to everybody and get it while you can and good luck to you two or three generations from now. And then I think on the Colorado River side, that's where my concern, being involved with this water stuff for like seven years, that's where my majority of my concern is because we are so grossly and ridiculously outnumbered between the folks that want those transfers and the folks that don't. When the river, the allocation of Arizona was divvied up, they left just a little less than 10% on the river for all of our river counties and communities, future municipal and industrial use, and it was supposed to be for no other purpose. But now that they're running out of water in the valley, you know, you have these hedge funds that see a multi-billion dollar opportunity, you see these developers that are chomping at the bit and they're going to try to transfer as much of that last 10% to central Arizona. It's not just a transfer of water, it's a transfer of our wealth down there because the water that goes down there and creates wealth down there, you can't do it here. So I think we need to still try on both.
I have one item, and it'll be brief, but I wanted to give you an update on the CrowdStrike event that we went through. So on Thursday, July 18th, I received a call at midnight from Nathan McDaniel, our Chief Information Officer for the county, informing me that CrowdStrike, which is an antivirus that we use at the county, like many other entities, provided an update to their software and caused worldwide impact, including Mojave County. He said our computer system was down and informed me that he was initiating our cybersecurity team response. We discussed the need to revisit it in the morning, first thing in the morning at 6:00, and then to inform you, the board. What I'd like to do, because I truly believe we handled it really well, and I'm so proud of their efforts, I'd like to have him just in two slides walk you through what we went through and what we did, so you are aware of the practice and the plan that we have in place to address these things.
Okay, Nathan.
Morning, Chairman and Board. Thank you, County Manager Elters. I have a slide here that will display the sequence of events. I'm not going to read them out loud, but I figured I'd put them up on the screen, you all can read. But I'll kind of summarize in, you know, off the hip on what happened Thursday night. I got a call from the Sheriff's Office Dispatch. I want to thank Frances Edwards. She reached out to me pretty quickly, indicating that they were seeing some strange activity. And the activity they were seeing is they were seeing computers, blue screen, and basically be at the Windows Recovery Console, completely non-functional. The biggest problem was this required IT to physically touch every single computer that was impacted. So this was not something we could remotely fix. We had to go put hands on every single device to fix this problem. So once I had figured out kind of what the extent of the problem was, close to midnight, I realized we needed to activate our cybersecurity incident response team, and I started making calls to my team. And I had to get in my truck and drive to places where people weren't answering their phones and beat on doors until I got people to come out. But that activity basically took place between 11:30 and about 12:30 in the morning on Thursday night. I contacted the county manager while I was driving, gave him an update on what the situation was. I contacted the Chief Information Security Officer at the State of Arizona, got some intelligence from him. They were aware of the problem, they were just activating themselves. So we got to this building and we focused primarily on the data center. Almost every single one of our servers was in a down state. So three of us, Jeremy Willis Dean, he's one of our technical services manager, Stephen Smarts, our security and infrastructure manager, and myself went to work on the data center. And once we got lined out there, Jeremy and I walked around this entire building. And then, once we got through this building, we went over to Public Works, and then we went to Development Services. And that took us to about 6:30 in the morning. We had touched a significant number of most of the computers in the Kingman area. And then at 7 o'clock in the morning, when the rest of the team started showing up for their normal work schedule, we updated everybody, sent everybody out to all the county facilities. And I would say by noon Friday, approximately by noon on Friday, we were significantly recovered from the event.
So, Madam Chairman and Board members, an incident that caused a lot of trouble worldwide and to some companies that are much larger than our budget and our resources were down through the weekend. We were substantially up by 8 o'clock when our employees showed up to work, and that is really a major achievement. We, the team does a lot of practices and scenarios and prepare. That is the outcome of such preparation. And I can't tell you as board how grateful I am to their effort for achieving what they did and how proud I am for what they did to get us back on track. It's really remarkable, and I wanted you to be aware of the good when we have some good to report, because sometimes we only hear about the other side. So thank you for listening and for the opportunity.
Thank you. Any other questions for Nathan? Thank you very much, Nathan.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, or is that it from you for the county managers? Okay, thank you. Call to public, a public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting. I'm opening it up. First up, Logan Marsh. After Logan, Chuck DeShazer, and then Armin.
Good morning, Board. Of course, Logan Marsh here, Golden Valley, Arizona. First of all, I want to thank you guys. I know that I appreciate the hard work that you guys do, and congratulations on some of you for your successful campaigns. I'm here to talk about some of the things that occurred during my campaign. I have sought legal advice before coming up here, but I feel that this is probably the best way to handle this. With that said, some things came to light. You know, a lot of us ran a really healthy campaign, and it was a fun adventure. I expected to be attacked for policies and, you know, all sorts of things, but I never expected my home life to be attacked. And what concerned me is these are people that either represent the county in some capacity. One of them directly is employed by the county, and the other is contracted through a subcontract with the county. And some pretty horrible things were said, everything from calling my family to the Marsh fudge packing plant. I'm sure some of you read the article in the B by the letter of the editor. Don't know who wrote the article, but it's pretty interesting. I thought it was on point. Some of the things that concerned me is I did an interview with the minor. It was about a two hour long interview. They wanted to cover this piece and try and bring some things together between both me and the other spoken person on these campaigns. And after the interview was completed, I do know that she interviewed the two other parties involved, and two hours before going to be published, something happened, they pulled back from posting the article. And I know that upset quite a few people who knew that the interview had occurred from both parties, which I think is what sparked that letter to the other in the B. And I want to praise Steve for covering that and reaching out to me and asking me if it's something that I wanted posted. For those of you who want to know what's in that article, you're more than welcome to go onto the B and read it. But the reason I'm standing here before you today is because, at the end of the day, these people represent the county in some capacity. And the statements that they made were horrific and absolutely uncalled for, extremely homophobic, which had nothing to do against my policies and my campaign. And I want to know what the county plans on doing about it. I will be filing a formal HR complaint today, whether, whatever direction it goes, I'm not quite sure. But these are things that the county, these people represent you. They represent, you know, one of you in particular, and I feel that, you know, you're probably good people, and that you wouldn't want your home life attacked on this level for absolutely no reason. For those of you who don't know much about me, I'll quicken this up. I was raised very religious. I was raised in the Church of Latter Day Saints, and I have really good family moral values. And it was really interesting to see what happened.
Thanks, thank you, Logan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Chuck DeShazer, and then Armin, and after Armin, Carolyn Strecker.
Hello, my name's Chuck DeShazer, Topock, Arizona. I'd like to thank four of the five supervisors for the July 1st vote concerning the new policy on no anonymous complaints. I've looked into it as of, yeah, August 2nd, that when the policy went into effect for June, we had 77 code enforcement complaints, and those have dropped to 39 within one month. So we've halved the number of complaints. And in the Building Department, it was 12 complaints in June, and it's now down to 10. And of those 10, I got the names and addresses and phone numbers and looked over the list this morning, and two of them were from county entities, and the three others were from one individual out in Meadview on everybody on his entire street, it seems. So it now looks like we really have five complaints in the Building Department as compared to 12 for the month of June. And that's all I have for today on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Armin Stang, and then Carolyn Strecker, and then Greg Beffert.
Armin Stang of Fort Mojave, AKA the German. I got a problem with the election, what was going on here, and there are certain people running, or were running, and having gun raffles. They're not a nonprofit. We have one county employee having a gun raffle. I hope she has enough courtesy to quit her job and give the money back she got from the raffle. And we all know what we're talking about. The other thing is, I believe the Fort Mojave, not Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley Fire Chief called and complained about the incident we had where the guy in a wheelchair threw a hundred dollar here, and he felt very unsafe. If he feels unsafe, why doesn't he come up here? We don't need metal detectors in the doors here. This is still a public building. You know, we don't want to restrict our freedom to go in and out with weapons or no weapons. I don't care. And last but least, I don't know how to put it nicely, but Hildy, what favor did you get from MEC? Thank you.
Okay, Carolyn Strecker, and then Greg Beffert, and Ben Patterson.
Good morning, Carolyn Strecker, Fort Mojave, Arizona. So similar to kind of going off of what Mr. Armin had said, politicking, which has been brought up here a lot. We've allowed certain politicking to come forward, but not for others. Politicking, which refers to the activities associated with campaigning, maneuvering, or working to gain advantage or influence within a political context. This can include strategies used by politicians to gain support, to negotiate deals, form alliances, and influence decision-making processes. This term can sometimes carry a negative connotation, suggesting manipulative or self-serving behavior. And I'm really, sorry, this is not personal, but it is personal for me. My son, who's nine years old, he gets asthma attacks. I own property in Mojave Valley, and most of my hospice patients who already have restrictive airway diseases are going to be suffering with the power plant. They're already dying. They don't need any environmental triggers. And yes, with recent print and publishing for the Arizona Republic, I am heavily concerned that Chairman Angus has been personally and politically compromised, as evidenced by her quid pro quo county emails with MEC executive members, including John Martel and Tyler Carlson. I would ask that she respectfully recuse herself from the rezoning vote that's upcoming in the next two weeks. If not, then I would make a request that the board vote on it, make a motion to recuse her vote, because I am concerned that she has an influential vote that is going to be affecting my community. And that's it for today.
Okay, Mr. Beffert, and then Ben Patterson, and then Philip Robinson.
Supervisors, for the record, Greg Beffert. I want to bring your attention to a video that I produced recently. We were talking about politics and how ugly it can be here. It's DesertSagePodcast.com, and it's titled "Case Study: How Politicians Distort Truth." And that's what I've been up here since September 2020 with the COVID issue, telling you, number one, you've been lied to, you're causing harm, and ultimately, now you've admitted it, including the vaccines. Recently, in a debate, Supervisor Angus said the vaccines and COVID were going to be the greatest mass murder in history. Said that. Well, I came up here and spoke against a proclamation that Supervisor Angus tried to put forward about supporting the state of Israel. And I told you then, you're being lied to. This conflict is nothing like it is put out to be, and now it's coming to pass. We've got 30 something, at least 30 something thousand Palestinians killed over there. It's not just me saying this. This is the ICC, the ICJ, there are arrest warrants out for Netanyahu and the Hamas leader again. I am not pro Palestinian, I'm not pro Israeli, I am pro humanity. And I told you that this conflict was nothing like what you're being told it was. Well, in a recent debate, Supervisor Angus, this issue about, you know, trying to stifle free speech because she was accused of that, my conflict with her came up, and she conflated it. She said that I attacked her religion. And what people try to do, especially Jewish people, is conflate Judaism with Zionism. It's a tactic that they use, just like they use antisemitism and those other terms, Holocaust denier, which ultimately, at the end, she called me. And if you go back and you look at the video, either she's not dealing with reality, or she straight up lied. And that's what politicians do, conflate. She conflated me, you know, talking to her and saying the things that I did with calling somebody the N-word. It's the same thing. So they conflate, and then they project, at the end, accuse you of doing the things that they're doing. Accuse me of denying the Holocaust. You're the one denying the Holocaust that's occurring right now. And all the four of you that supported what is occurring now, and it's not just me, and it's not just, you know, I talked about the control that AIPAC had over Congress. It's down at the state level, and it's at the local level here, that the ADL had over censorship. Those are truths. If, go find out if what I'm saying is a lie or not. If I'm not telling the truth, well, then that's great. But if I am telling the truth, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to continue to push this? Are you going to retract that proclamation now?
Thank you, Mr. Beffert. Ben Peterson, and then Philip Robinson, and then Scotty McClure.
Supervisors, Ben Peterson, Spur Drive, Yucca, Arizona. I'm here today to present the criminal complaints I filed against Supervisors and staff. Those of you watching at home can request this from the Board of the Clerk. The exhibits contain confidentiality clauses and are thus withheld. You'll receive a full set of documents from my attorney shortly. Permission to approach the clerk?
Will you go get them? Okay, I guess that's it. Philip Robinson.
Morning, y'all. Philip Robinson, Golden Valley. There's a couple of things I want to bring up. I'm kind of disappointed. I did a record request on GPS on Jeanne Kinch, and I asked her online about it, and this is what she wrote me back. I have business being everywhere throughout the county and beyond. It is my job to represent all property owners, no matter where they are. You don't understand the county policy, which I do. I want to know what your policy is, especially from our county attorney, maybe the county manager. But anyway, I'll go on. My job is to be able to claim I had no business being anywhere. Please, Phil, I don't like, I like you, and I don't want to get caught up in the sea of lies. This is not lies. She has gone over the speed limit on the 10, going to Phoenix, going to the GOP headquarters down there in a county vehicle. That's not cool. She has gone to county meetings in a county vehicle. That is not assessor business. Not even Jean does that. Hildy don't do that. I want people accountable, and this is not being accountable. That vehicle is supposed to be, and I got it right here, is supposed to be for county use only. And going to a GOP meeting is not county business, is not. I don't care what anybody says. Then the rules need to be changed. Wrong way. But I'm very dis- Right there. Right there. This is at the Women's Republic. That's her car, and on the back it says for business only. You told me to get proof, Hildy, a long time ago, before I got sick. I got sick right after that next month. But this is ridiculous. I've got more pictures of this. That is not county business, going to a church. It's not county business to go to Golden Gate, to the GOP headquarters here in Kingman. No use. She doesn't do it down in Bullhead. She doesn't do none of those down there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Scotty McClure, come on down.
Scotty from Bullhead. Ron, can you pull number 26 and number 52? Fifty-two, I just want to know what the heck this is. I have no questions. But what is it? Number 26, I finally got you to put it on the agenda, kinda. Oh, Hildy, you love your posters. I understand you may have taken a political campaign contribution from high ground. You didn't? Okay, I guess I was wrong. We'll be getting all your information from Phoenix here pretty soon. I know how much you love things like this. This is dated 1/6/24 regarding John Martel, the MEC and APOC. John, you and MEC are doing this as a favor for me, honestly, and I appreciate it. I'm not going to let this go far. Let's just get it over with, and we can all say that I am honored with what I said I would do. I talked to Grace Heck, and I don't think it's a good idea. If she comes, it's just getting out of hand because it's too political. And I told her I didn't think it was a good idea. Sent from my phone. This is just kind of the time that you split, you were supporting Grace Heck for District Two Supervisor to fill your seat about that time, and then you went to this clown, this libertarian, this successful businessman. Well, you guys are going to have fun with him. Who invited Ron Gould to this meeting all of a sudden? MEC thinks this is his meeting to control. I'm getting pissed off. I wrote him that. If he wants Supervisor Gould there, I'm out. John Martel. I have the waivers sent over to you today, and just waiting for Hildy to confirm the time. John Martel, COO of MEC. Don't worry, Hildy, there's more. The email originated from outside your organization. Exercise caution when opening statements or clicking links, especially from unknown senders. Boy, this just stinks, reeks. This email, exercise caution again, from unknown senders. Of course I will. Exercise caution again. Appreciate your support last year of the units from MEC, APOC, who are at our Apache Generation Station, and thank you for signing the support card daily. In other words, Hildy, two weeks ago, I made a complaint to Bullhead City Attorney and Ryan Asflin's office. I hope this goes to the grand jury, because this sounds like you're making a deal with them. You will have a chance to, I suppose.
Okay, thank you very much. Do I have to close the call to public before I comment? Oh.
So just to be clear, the opportunity to respond comes after the call to public?
So I close the call to public. Okay, I'm going to close the call to public. May I respond first? Okay. I've been reading a lot about this. I'm going to tell you the story behind that text. During the first site in Fort Mojave, there was a group called Not in My Neighborhood. Mac McKeever was the spokesman. I invited he and his wife over to my office. During that meeting, he told me some things that were different than what MEC was telling me. So I said, how about I put together a meeting over there? We'll all stand on the site, we'll look around, because they were saying that it was closer than I was hearing, so let's all stand on the site, and then we'll all get the questions answered at the same time. It was an informal meeting, a non-political meeting. I just wanted everyone to get the same information. So when this was gotten, that was the favor. That was the favor. Tyler Carlson himself came to this meeting because it was a favor to me. I was doing it for the people who were against it. So when the people from the Not in My Neighborhood started saying they wanted other things at this meeting, I said, no, 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 this is not a political meeting. Grace Heck was running for supervisor. It's like she shouldn't be there. This is not political. Ron Gould, at the time, I said he shouldn't be there, but he ended up coming. You were at that meeting. And we stood there. So that was what, there was actually, I'm proud of that, because I was listening to the people, what they wanted. I wanted to hear myself from MEC that the information they told me was not wrong. We had that meeting, I think it was very successful, and that's what that text was all about. They were doing a favor by meeting with the opposition. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Board and public, I just want to remind you that Mr. Ben Peterson applied to have a public right-of-way abandoned so it could be his own private road. After that was denied unanimously, he then began to slander myself. Now he's slandering me in videos that he's putting out on YouTube. He's hiding behind his little made-up video where he takes clips from another meeting and portrays them as the meeting where we actually discussed his issue, which is totally untrue. It's a totally different meeting. Makes up things, makes up his own law. So if you see that, take a look at the purple-haired AI news bimbo that he's hired to make his little video. This is ridiculous. I have a job to do. A lot of times, people don't like how things go. They want their own way. Apparently, we should have pinned a note to Mr. Peterson's sweater to tell him when the meeting was, because he didn't even bother to show up to his own meeting. But I just wanted to enlighten you on that. People call periodically asking about his goofy video, and there it is. He made it up out of whole cloth. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Any other, anything else from the board? All right, please simmer down. All right. Next up, we have a presentation, the post-construction update on Mojave County Animal Shelter.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here today to present the Mojave County, the new Mojave County Animal Shelter on Burbank Avenue is complete, open, and currently serving the community. It was completed on schedule and approximately $90,000 under budget. And there in the photograph, you'll see in the foreground, the beautiful memorial garden for Yvonne Orr, donated by Casey Orr. Next slide, please. I'd like to recognize Aaron Schreckengost, Butch Finkbeiner, and Nicole Manjamele for their hard work and skill in delivering a first-class, state-of-the-art animal shelter. You'll see here some statistics showing the new animal shelter, approximately 6,500 square feet, and a 13% increase in dog kennels and cat cages. Next slide. And in wrapping up, I do want to point out some of the interesting features, the modern animal shelter-specific features that really make it stand out and highly functional for both staff and those of the community that come in for adoptions. Abundance of natural light, large exercise areas, as well as the state-of-the-art medical room with exam and grooming areas. Thank you very much, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions? Yes, rise of gold.
Under budget, Mr. Lutowski? It's rhetorical. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Nothing? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, before we go to the consent agenda, I want to move up item 74, because there are several people here who have to leave early. We have our District Representative John Gillette. So item 74 is discussion, possible action to review the terms and conditions of the high-ground lobbyist contract and decide whether to submit a request for proposal for state-order lobbyist for 2025 legislative session. Travis William Felters is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My memory serves that we didn't have enough time as this board to go through a full public procurement process to retain the services of a lobbyist prior to the 2023 legislative session. And now that the session is essentially over, and the chance of a special session is really diminishing, if the board were to be, want to do that, now would probably be the time to do that. So that's why I put this on.
Okay, we do have John Gillette signed up.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm here on item 74, but before I start, I want to answer Supervisor Johnson's question, why you don't have a piece of groundwater legislation. You heard the response from Mr. Ponder. The reason you don't have groundwater legislation is that Senator Borelli, Representative Bisucci started a bill the year prior to me being elected. That bill was carried on into the next year, as several bills do, and it was amended, it was moved around, and being new, new to water, I ran one bill. That bill passed, you received the money, and it was spent. Looking at the new bills and looking at Representative Bisucci's bill, now mind you, these are the majority leaders, so they can make stuff happen if they need to make stuff happen. And they were. But what I noticed as a new representative is constant pushback, not only from some board members, but high ground is an entity. I physically watched a representative from high ground throw the bill in the trash and say, this is going nowhere. So if that's the kind of support that you're going to get from your lobbyist, that would be very telling as to why we don't have a bill. Now, you know we have a bill now that we've been working since I have been there, so two years. 1221 started off as something else, and it has morphed. We've had some private meetings on this bill, but this bill closes the basin, and I think that is the goal. The bill closes the entire basin to any new entities other than the tribes. And that is kind of an issue that I've been talking about for two years, and now it's going to happen. I did send Chairwoman Angus a copy of the public report and a copy of the tribal minutes from their meeting on water, and I've got a packet I'm going to send to all of you. But if you'll look at their map on their packet, there is a pipeline from Greg's Hideout that goes to the intersection of Pierce Ferry, Stockton Hill, and Antares Road, which is very close to the new Gravity LLC project. So we're talking 12 miles of a 70-mile pipeline. This would devastate the basin. This is the prime reason that we are trying to close the basin to any new entity. And I know the agenda item, and I'll get to the germane-ness part of this, the agenda item is to retain high ground or not. I can tell you from a personal standpoint, and we have the records, documents, emails to prove it, high ground has fought us every step of the way on a piece of groundwater legislation. The reason for that, and I will agree with Mr. Ponder on this point, the hyper-partisan issues at the Capitol are real. It is very real. So the Mojave County paid lobbyist is bringing a governor's bill to the representatives of the Republican side of the body. Does anyone think that's going to be a start? We are not going to look at the governor's bill.
You can continue if you-
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I read the governor's bill, and there are some good parts in there, but there are some devastating parts on water transfers and new agreements with the tribes. We just saw the one agreement go through, 4,300 acre feet, now they automatically want to do a pipeline. If they do this on their own land, we cannot stop them. If they do this on federal land, we cannot stop them, but we have a better chance if we close the basin completely. Now, when it comes to the issue of high ground, everyone complained about the signature takers in the parking lot for the ranked choice voting. That is High Ground LLC that is sponsoring that activity. It is their company that's pushing it forward, and let me pull up this graphic here. The company is aligned with ASU, Center for Future for Arizona, and you can go to their Twitter post, Make Elections Fair Arizona, and it has the leadership of high ground on that board. So you have a 501(c)(3) nonprofit working with a lobbyist, Chuck Coughlin from high ground, pushing the ranked choice voting. Now, Mojave County has paid a million dollars to this organization for water legislation that they're not bringing us. Many Republican members will not meet with high ground. So my recommendation for the last three meetings has been to find another lobbyist or simply come yourselves. Sam and I have talked many times. Travis and I have talked many times. I've spoken with Ron. We've had some good private meetings. We disagree on a lot of the water issues, but I agree that we need to close the basin. There are ways to do that. Now, we were close. We were close on this special session. I offered two amendments that were accepted, or will be accepted, but as you know, you cannot amend the bill until it comes to the floor. One of my amendments is a variance process, so the city of Kingman, if they are short on water, they can apply for a variance. Because right now, the INA does absolutely nothing. It is not law-enforceable. It has to go to a court, and has anyone heard of crop rotation? Every seven years, you rotate crops. So let's say a farm or an entity pumps until they're dry.
Excuse me, John, I think we've traveled off the-
No, this is germane-ness, Madam Chair. So with the INA that has been pushed and sponsored by high ground continually, there's been no other availability or option for them to work. And my last meeting with them was the last meeting with them, because I wouldn't run the governor's bill. I was threatened with a primary. You want a primary, me, that is fine. I'll take the challenge, and I'll move forward if I win or lose. That is the will of the people. But I'm not going to be bullied by a lobbyist that will not support our bills, support our agenda, and runs ranked choice voting. That's me. Most of the other Republican members feel the same, and I encourage you to call them and ask, because it is what it is.
Thank you so much.
I stand for your questions.
Any questions for Representative Gillette? Nothing? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. I believe Mr. Ponder.
Madam Chair, supervisors, again, thank you for the opportunity to present to you and for the opportunity to represent you all for the last seven years, not only myself, but former Kingman resident, native Mr. Patrick Cunningham. So I want to go through a presentation for you quickly about what I believe has been accomplished, where I believe we're headed, and then I'll respond to some of the comments that were made just a moment ago. Last meeting, though, there was a resident who, with all due respect, said that high ground is no friend of Mojave County. Respectfully, we're one of the few friends that rural Arizona has down at the Capitol. If you go through the lobbyists down at the Capitol, most of them will have conflicts with what you're trying to do on rural groundwater. Most of them will. In fact, the best ones will, except for us, and we have a lot of accomplishments to show you. We have been catching a lot of heat. You guys, I'm sure, have received some emails. For any of you who are fans of World War II documentaries, you probably have heard the phrase flak or over the target. The flak is heaviest when you're over the target. The only reason we're catching the heat that we're catching now is because we are disrupting the status quo down at the Capitol. The status quo is to perceive rural Arizona with one voice, and that is agriculture. We know that that is not the one voice that rural Arizona has, and we're trying to speak to the many voices that you all have as we look for legislation. So we're trying to navigate that minefield. I think we're doing it successfully. So I just want to point that out. As we look into, I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to move forward here. Do I need to call it? Can you move to the next slide? No, there we go. Is there a mouse here? I can't do it. Okay, so as you know, we've been representing you guys since 2017. That was, you all sought representation at that time because there was an effort to transfer Colorado River Water. Next slide, please. That in particular was the MVID det- Water. Next slide, please. That, in particular, was the MVIDD transfer. Patrick Cunningham, at the time, your lobbyist, and a representative of high ground, successfully defeated that transfer of CAP water, or of, I'm sorry, MVIDD water to the Central Arizona Project. Now, if you look at the Rounds Consulting Report that was recently undertaken by the county, and I believe the city, there is not only an economic value to getting legislation passed, but there is an economic value to defeating things that you don't want passed. And there is a significant economic value to the county of defeating just the MVIDD transfer. I'm sorry, was I limited to three minutes?
You can continue.
I'm sorry.
You can continue.
I'm sorry. In addition, in 2018, and this is, by the way, your river water is your forever water, for those of you on the river. You don't have any other resources, so we have to protect that as much as we possibly can. In 2018, we negotiated, we were at the table with the governor's office, with DWR, high ground was, negotiating the DCP and helping ensure that river communities took no cuts in water in the DCP in 2018. Again, groundwater now. We have been representing you for several years on the groundwater issue, and we have made progress. Five years ago, issues of groundwater in rural Arizona were not on anybody's radar at the Capitol. Now, they are top of mind for everybody. And as I mentioned, last week, there was a meeting, I'm sorry, July 24th, there was a meeting in Maricopa County where discussions were talked. There were two members of, one former member of the CAP Board, one member of the CAP Board, and a legislator. They were talking about access to river water, and they were talking about access to a transfer market for groundwater. This is why you need representation at the Capitol. This is what we at high ground have been helping defend for years. If you can move on to the next slide, please. So as I mentioned earlier in the legislative update, you will do, we will go through a reconsultation for a smaller river, about 11 million acre feet versus 15 million acre feet. High ground wants to be, to help be at the table, I've had conversations with Ms. Jamie Kelly about this, to preserve Arizona's water, and in particular, the river community's water. The Upper Basin is looking for cuts only on the Lower Basin. And the Lower Basin states, California, for the first time ever, has agreed to negotiate with Arizona, Nevada, to come to a compromise agreement, to present to the Upper Basin, to present to Bureau of Reclamation, to find a compromise on how we preserve our communities. Moving forward to the next slide, groundwater. I just need to say, before I go into anything, the basin is already closed. The INA closed the basin to new users. That was, and I give the utmost credit to former Representative Gina Cobb, but high ground was, I, in particular, was in the room for those conversations all of 2022, hammering home how bad of a challenge it is for Mojave County that, that since 2014, when California passed Sigma and their groundwater regulations, that we have seen an influx of agriculture into our county, draining the aquifer. So that's a 7x growth in water coming out of the basin between 2015 and 2021. We've been telling that story at the Capitol. You all saw this information when we did the, when we did the INA hearings in 2021. To Mr. Johnson's question from earlier, I would argue that less than 20% of the legislature understands water at the Capitol. That is a significant challenge, okay? Beyond that, about half of the legislators down there are new, within two years or so. There's been a lot of resignations, there's been a lot of turnover. Some districts have seen all of their representatives in the House turnover. So we're trying to do this re-education process. But all the data that you see on this slide here led to the creation of the INA, and I want to give you all credit as well for gathering data, working with USGIS, to gather data, to present to DWR, to show the trouble that you were in, that then they could use to capitalize on that and create an INA to actually close the basin. Our groundwater bill, actually, let me just move on to the next slide, I'm sorry. So I want to take this opportunity, I've discussed some of those successes, and I'll move on to bullet three, because we covered the first two already. Rural Management Area Legislation, Gina Cobb, in 2021, got the Rural Study Committee that was here in Mojave County. From that, we created basically a list of nine items that needed to be included in legislation. That evolved into the first Rural Management Area Legislation. All nine items were incorporated. Gina will tell you that every, every month, every week, we were efforting to make, have conversations with the Farm Bureau, with the cattlemen, with Gail Griffin, with those participants, to try and find a negotiated solution. There was an unwillingness to meet, to even meet, to get a hearing. We've tried to Mr. Gould's point last meeting, where he talked about working around the chair. You're able to work around the chair if you have the willingness and the courage to upset some people in your own party. And unfortunately, we were not able to get that done. So we got that study committee. Moving on to the next slide. When the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority negotiations were going on in 2022, we came within, and I tell you this not facetiously, we came within 12 hours of getting Rural Management Area Legislation through. There was a deal on the table. Ultimately, items within that deal were walked back. Some of those items that were walked back were actually protections for the river communities, about future transfers, not allowing any future transfers until the, until the river hit 2195, I think, was the level. I'll have to go back and look at my numbers. Nonetheless, we had a significantly successful negotiation that year in that you provided a letter to the, to the Director of DWR, asking for an INA based off of the new data. And we also, high ground helped secure $200 million. We were the only ones lobbying on this issue. We helped secure $200 million for the Water Conservation Grant Fund, of which you guys have been awarded $3 million for a recharge grant. So, and I will give tremendous credit to Mr. Gillette. He did get you $3.4 million in 2023. I think that he deserves a round of applause for that. And, but I want to also say that the groundwork that was laid for the prior five years did help create that scenario where it was a no-brainer. Let's do $3.4 million from Mojave County so that we can protect this community that we've been working so hard to protect. Move on to the next slide, please. So we got the irrigation on expansion area. As I mentioned in my earlier testimony, last year, we worked on legislation at the direction, at the approval of Representative Bisucci. Never in my wildest dreams would I have thought that getting the governor's office to support Mojave County's proposal. Keep in mind, this has always been Mojave County's proposal. Gary Watson, Regina Cobb, Regina Cobb, Leo Bisucci, Sonny Borelli. To get the governor's office to support Mojave County's proposal, I think is a tremendous success, but is being treated as a failure. I'm baffled by that, because what you want here in Mojave County is you want a representative down at the Capitol who can speak to the governor's office, and who can also speak to the Speaker and the President. I have not been denied any meetings at the Capitol, with the exception of text messages to Mr. Gillette recently. Republicans, I meet with them all the time. I respond to every text message I send, with the exception of a few who don't meet with anybody, who don't meet with any lobbyists, including Wendy Rogers and Jake Hoffman and those folks. So if you ever hear of lobbyists meeting with them, it's few and far between that that happens. But, but we've had meetings with the Speaker, with the, with the President, with chiefs of staff, et cetera. In fact, Mr. Lingefelter was at a meeting with the President earlier this session, and Senator Kerr. So not only did we lobby to get the Mojave County proposal as the starting point for the Governor's Water Policy Council, but we also lobbied to get Jamie Kelly on the Governor's Water Policy Council as Mojave County's representative, with Mr. Lingefelter as her alternate. Now, if you move on to the next slide, I want to point out the Governor's Water Policy Council here, and that is that this is, I'm sorry, actually, I'm sorry, I apologize. Additionally, last year, I got a meeting with the Attorney General, with Mr. Lingefelter, as well as the City of Yuma. This was at my request, and we were able to present our challenges with the Greenstone to Queen Creek transfer. At that point in time, I asked Ms. Mays if she would write an amicus brief on behalf of Mojave County. We know that she did write an amicus brief on behalf of Mojave County, and we know that at least part of that suit was successful on behalf of Mojave County. I believe that's a positive thing to have relationships with the AG's office. There have been additional successes. We've defeated bad bills that might have negatively impacted Mojave County. I can speak to why 1221 was a bad bill at the end of the day, and I will. But just going to the next slide, the Governor's Water Policy Council. It was made up, it was not a liberal council. It was made up of people from the mining industry. It was made up of Craig Sullivan from CSA. Can you move to the next slide, please? Thank you. It was made up of Craig Sullivan from the CSA. The Farm Bureau was on it. They decided to resign. Senator Kerr was on it. She decided to resign. She was replaced by a chili farmer named Ed Curry from Southern Arizona. If you want to read Ed's story, even, the Arizona Farm Bureau has a video of Ed Curry talking about how great he is. Jamie Kelly was on it, the universities were on it, Agribusiness Council. So there were a lot of folks on this. Paul Brearly with the Department of Agriculture is one of the most trusted names in ag in the state. Move forward one slide. So I want to point this slide out, because this talks about the partisanship and the challenges that we've faced, okay? Every piece of legislation, water legislation, that's been passed in Arizona in the past 70 years, 80 years, has been nonpartisan. Every, it's been bipartisan, from the Colorado River Compact to the Groundwater Code of 48, to the, to the Groundwater Management Act in 1980. It took 32 years. This is how difficult of an issue water is. It took 32 years from 1948 to 1980 to get the Groundwater Management Act, and the only reason that happened is because the federal government was withholding money for the CAP Canal. Okay, so that's the only reason we have groundwater management in urban Arizona. The fact that we've made this amount of progress in five to seven years, I think, is significant. We are on precipice of legislation. And I would not put down the idea of a special session this year, just because it didn't happen by August 12th. We continue to meet, and we continue to have those conversations. So some challenges, next slide, please. The challenges with Senate Bill 1221 that Mr. Gillette presented. At the very end, the last day of session, without anybody being able to review the bill, from Mojave County, from rural Arizona, a bill was put forward by Ms. Griffin with an amendment that significantly changed the approach, okay? It was a very, prior to this, 1221, the bill created three protected basins. Again, the Wallopai is already closed, but it would have closed further, if there is any way to do that, the Wallopai Basin. However, the final version of it only impacted those three basins, okay? So what happens then in the Sacramento Basin? It's very close to here. People just move their farming operations to the Sacramento Basin, that's the basin that's completely unregulated. What we need from legislation is not only protection for our basin here, but some language in place that could lead to future protections of other basins, so that they're not exploited like we've seen in this basin in particular. That was one problem. The second problem allowed for the banking of water. So farms could just aggregate their water and roll it over and roll it over and roll it over until it became a scarce resource, and then sell it to people at a higher price. We were very concerned with that. That's a reason we, we asked for opposition from Mojave County. Next slide. The council makeup. The council was made up of five individuals. Four of them didn't even need to come from the basin. Only one of them needed to come from the basin. In fact, the municipal representative didn't even need to come from the basin. That's a problem. That was a concern of ours. And it allowed for agriculture to represent 60% of any council, regardless of what the makeup of that basin is. That was a concern as well, from the county. And I just want to make clear, I'm not operating unilaterally here. I am operating with consultation with the county and experts. Additionally, the conservation, 10% was conserved. So right now, we have a 34,000 acre foot deficit in Mojave County, and I'm sorry, in the Wallopai Valley Basin. The maximum conservation under this would have kept us at a 28,000 or so acre foot deficit into perpetuity. That much more water coming out of the basin that's going into it. We saw that as problematic. And that's only if you get to the 15% reductions. 10% guaranteed, the other 5%, you need an 80% vote of the council in order to approve that additional 5%. That gave us some concerns. Next slide, please. It provided exemptions for small farms. How many farms are there that are 120 acres or less that are using 2.5 acre feet or less? We don't know. We don't know the answer to that. And so without knowing the data, without being able to analyze that, we were concerned about that provision. That's, that's the challenge with seeing a bill less than 30 minutes before it was voted on, okay? And we want to advocate for Mojave County in the best way possible. And sometimes, no bill is better than a bad bill, okay? In fact, when you look at the 10% and the 15% reductions, if you write those into statute, there is one legal theory out there, and I won't say it's right or wrong. There's one legal theory out there that you cannot scale up that 10 to 15% in the future, because you've capped it right there. You've given a right that cannot be modified, okay? So that's going back to the prior slide. We had some concerns. We also have concerns with these exemptions. You can never take them away if you, if you write them into statute the first time, okay? Moving on to six, weak goals. Now, if the council didn't want to go above a 10% reduction, the goal of the, of the council, the goal of the basin could be limited to gathering data. How is that beneficial to the basin that is over, over allocated by 27,000? We talked about over allocation of the Colorado River Water. You're over allocated by 28,000 acre feet, even if you get the maximum here, okay? That was a concern. And then also, lastly, there were concerns with respect to how the municipal credits were being calculated. So the way that the math was done is that municipalities would get groundwater credits based off of the infrastructure that they have installed. But the language with respect to the infrastructure was not clear. In other words, we didn't have enough time to review it to make sure that it covered everything. But City of Kingman's using about 9,700 acre feet of water today. We had, in our proposal, we had built in the capacity of somewhere in the neighborhood of 17,500 to 18,500 acre feet of water going into the future. So with respect to Mr. Gillette's reference to a variance, we've actually created a significant variance in our own proposal already that would be to the benefit of Mojave County. Last thing I want to point out is I know that you're getting pushback on, on what Mr. Gillette is referring to, our CEO running a campaign for Make Elections Fair. I have had zero work on that campaign. If you look at any lobbyists down at the Capitol, I am sure they have client, a client or two or three that you do not agree with. You're not going to find representation if you're looking for somebody that you agree with 100% of the time. I will lastly say that the campaign, and this is not me in any way advocating, but it is to Mr. Gould's point, I think the last time we talked about this, it is either a jungle primary or RCV, but not necessarily RCV. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have, as that was a little bit of a lengthy presentation.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Ponder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, to wrap it up, I've been involved with this water stuff, first as Vice Mayor for Kingman, and now as a, as a board member, and thankful for that for almost eight years now. And I would say, we are closer than ever to getting at least some relief in some new rural local tools for rural groundwater. We're very close, and I think we'll get there in the next, you know, maybe year or two, which is a nice thing to say, after you've been at something for so long. Our, just to wrap it, you kind of covered it in your presentation, but our, our, I guess, heartburn with Senate Bill 1221, the biggest thing, and I think those of you that live in the Kingman area will appreciate this, that it would have allowed the Saudi Arabia, UAE, the international and the California corporate farms to basically certify their water use, their current water use. And right now, they're currently using about 71 or 72% of the water in the Wallopai Basin on an annual basis. So that bill would have allowed them to certify their water use, and then allow them to bank that water, and then lease it or sell it to other basin users, including the City of Kingman, with no cap on per acre cost. And if you follow what's going on with the Colorado River, you can just use the Greenstone to Queen Creek Colorado River Transfer, that was a little over 2,000 acre foot, and the free market And the free market prevails, obviously. They are selling that water per acre foot to Queen Creek for over $13,000 an acre foot. So if the City of Kingman were ever to be put in that situation and all of their water infrastructure is paid for by our water bills, our water rates, and they had to start drilling new wells in the southerly part of the basin and, and equipment to clean the water, the City of Kingman and the surrounding area that is, that uses that water system right now, I think there's about 65,000 people plus 80 businesses in the industrial park that use that system, and it's going to expand as this area continues to grow. We would have some very, very costly water rates. And we saw what happened when we just put a $5 fee down in Golden Valley and how it made people's water bills double down there and how much heartache that, that caused. So I, I think that that was something we were fighting against. Also, the board composition, there would be a new board created apart from this board of supervisors. Like, we're the ones that are supposed to have local control. They would create this new board, five people, two seats would automatically go to the agriculture folks. One seat would go to industry, and then one seat was supposed to go to the city. And then another one was, I think there's one last, last seat that was supposed to be appointed by the governor. And we just didn't really agree with that. We do stay close with all of our cities on water issues, both river and groundwater. And again, like I, like I said, I think we're close. But I think we do need, this county does need to have some sort of representation down at the Capitol because there's a lot of attention on water now, both river water and groundwater. We owe it to the people that are in this auditorium and everybody that lives here in Mojave County to advocate for their water. And we do work very closely with our cities. Not all of our cities have active water lobbyists like we do. And so Mojave County, we do carry most of the, we shoulder most of the weight in that advocacy with close partnership with our LD30 folks and the mayors and Mojave County Water Authority and Jamie Kelly. We do need somebody down there for us to work with. I, I heard what you said where you have at the Capitol lobbyists and attorneys and, and good luck if you find somebody that you're not going to disagree with, maybe some of their clients, because I know that all of the best lobbying firms and attorney firms, they, they advocate on a number of different issues. The importance and the distinction is that you, you have to maintain ethical boundaries and you cannot cross information. You can't give confidential information. You can't tip off others, and you can't really advocate on the same side of an issue. So I think that would be a short list, but I think I definitely do support an RFP. And we do through that public procurement process and get somebody on board, but I do think we need somebody on board. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I make one just super quick closing statement? As we mentioned earlier, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, okay? And we've gotten you at every table that has been, that has happened on water since 2017. That's my advocacy.
Okay, anyone else for Mr. Ponder? Supervisor Bishop?
I just have a, a comment that I think would be appropriate for this time. I, I think, I think communications is lacking with our LD30 representatives, our lobbyists, and our, our water person that we've chosen to represent this board. Seems like nobody really knows what the other hand is doing, and the communications is not getting back to this board. It may be getting back to the county manager and to Supervisor Linganfelter, but I don't know where it's going from there. It's certainly not being communicated to my office. I, I think going into the year 2025, I would wish that the new board would insist on some kind of more personal communications like we had back in the day of Patrick Cunningham and Regina Cobb and Gary Watson. We need to get back to communicating to where we all know what's going on with water instead of just at these meetings where we have an agenda item related to water, then we get the briefing, and we really don't get the full context because we haven't been kept informed all along the way. And in fact, the first time I met Mr. Ponder was just by chance. I saw him sitting with Supervisor Linganfelter and knew he was somebody because he was wearing a suit. And this is Mojave County where we dress down quite a bit, so. But I think he had been our lobbyist for a couple of years at that time, and I didn't even know who he was. So I, my parting words as I run off and enjoy the sunset would be to demand communications to every member of this board, the new board.
Thank you. Thank you, so noted. Anyone else? Representative Gillette has just asked, we don't usually do this, but I'm granting this for him. He just has a very short, something to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick rebuttal. You saw the slides, you saw his presentation. Every word mentioned in there on 1221 was opposition. There was no working with the legislators, no working with the people that dropped out of the Governor's Committee. And, and Mr. Ponder is correct. He has been at the Governor's meeting along with other representatives the entire time. We have not been meeting with the Governor. We have our own separate water meeting with our individuals, our staff, and we put these things together. But what I want to really just speak about real quick, I've heard several times that this is a last minute bill. Supervisor Gould can tell you from experience that all bills are last minute bills. You cannot get an amendment to a bill unless it's on the floor. It has to go to the committee of the whole. Now, during this bill, this two years that we've been working on this, I met with Supervisor Linganfelter separately. I've met with Sam. We've met as a group. The county asked me for five things in this bill. I have all five things now. The five problems you had with this bill, I have amendments that have been well received by the drafters of the document. So the board makeup is still in the air. The Sierra Club wants a seat on that board. It's not good for any of us. So that's, that is our contentious point right now, and I believe that is why we haven't gone to special session because I would rather have a scientist there to advise on the environment than a member of the Sierra Club. So if we resolve that issue with the Governor, but the Governor is with the tribes and the Sierra Club, that's why we're not meeting with her. So all you saw the entire time was opposition and, and no bill is better than any bill that could be bad or maybe bad. You don't know what you don't know. You have to place some trust in us. I came to the county board. I spoke with Mr. Walsh live. I know he was in that transition period, but he was now representing the City of Kingman. I spoke with him live the very day of that bill on the amendments as I was sitting in the Majority Leader's office with him on speakerphone as we did with Mr. Ponder and Ms. Kelly and Regina Cobb and got the live updates to amend this bill. The reason it didn't go that day is because of the Sierra Club. So I would just close with this. Mr. Ponder is correct. He does represent people that, that we don't agree with, and every lobbyist firm does. But when it gets to the point when you're representing an idea that changes our very voting system, changes the constitution of the state of Arizona and gives us something that the people don't want, those meetings do dry up, and I think it's time for a change. I think we look at 1221 objectively because that does close the basin. Now, my final statement, if the INA was truly closed, would we see all these attacks? GPS, the hydrogen solar, the tribes? We see all these entities moving towards the basin with all these million dollar projects. They have attorneys too, and they've done in their research their due diligence, and they found there is a way into the basin. The INA does have some good points, but it is not the tool we need. We must close the basin, especially to all foreign entities. The entities that are there, and this is the contentious point of the bill with Supervisor Linganfelter, with Mr. Ponder's organization, those farms are there. They're legal. They're constitutional. They did what they needed to do. Do I like that fact that they are there taking our water? No, but how do you ex post facto them out? How do you take a right away that we've given them? The state, the county, the city? We've given them this right. Do you go in and remove their rights? Now you have an equal protection issue under the law. So they're there. We need to manage and control them because we can get away with that. Does that mean we manage and control Kingman a little bit as well? Sure it does. But that's why the variance, the variance that we were talking about is part of it, and that is a huge part of my yes or no vote. So the bill is not done. It is a work in progress. So to continually oppose those that are working on it gains us no ground as a county, as an entity. And as all of you know, I live in the basin, so I have a stake in it. My groundwater comes from my well that is in the basin. I have a huge stake in it. I will not do anything that damages our groundwater. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Linganfelter? How do I proceed?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If there are no comments, I would, I would make a motion that the procurement department puts out an RFP. And, and I would request to not be one of those members because I will work with whatever lobbying firm this board chooses to the best of my ability always, so.
Okay.
That a motion?
Is that in the form of a motion?
To, to issue an RFP for a water lobbyist, yes.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and thank you. That was a really interesting discussion. I'm glad we had it today. Okay, we're going to go back now to the consent agenda. Following items listed under consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items unless a board member's or requests. Supervisor Johnson. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Number 19, number 26, and number 52.
Supervisor Linganfelter?
Nothing this morning, Madam Chair.
Supervisor Bishop?
41, please.
Okay, 41, and I'm taking out 45. So I need a motion to approve consent agenda items 5 through 61 minus 19, 26, 29, 41, 45, and 52.
That moves.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries number 19. This is to approve budget adjustments for the SB 1847 medical marijuana funding. Did I got that one right? Yeah. Approved budget adjustments for SB 1847 medical marijuana funding to public health departments which provides funding for the countywide mental health symponies, symposiums to allow for an increase in grant revenue. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just wanted an explanation on what are we doing here?
Good morning. The medical marijuana dollars were approved, I believe in 2022, to be utilized to fund activities around the mental health resource team and then to bring the mental health symposiums to Mojave County. As of right now, we have put on five symposiums so far since 2022 with our largest yet to date to be held on October 30th. And these funds, we received $54,750 more than was originally accepted in 2022, and those funds will go towards the symposium this fall.
Madam Chairman, Melissa, what do we do at the symposium?
The symposium is for, it's a combination of training and education for behavioral health professionals, but also for the general public to come in, learn more about mental health and behavioral health, current methods that are being used, resources. We have a mini resource fair that is in conjunction with the symposium, and then we always have a main speaker.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have a question. Who decided the, what purpose these dollars were going to go? Is that something that the state did or we did in-house?
It was the Board of Supervisors, I believe. It was the April 18th, 2022 meeting. We brought forth a plan to the Board of Supervisors, and it was voted on at that time.
Did you bring just this plan or was it a choice of things that?
It was several different working items, and it was approved as a whole.
Is it working out okay? And is people, you know, attending it? Is it well attended? Is it not?
Yes, it, it has been well attended. We just did one in Colorado City, and I believe there was about 25 individuals that came to that one, and we consider that a success.
Yeah, I heard about that one. The, the people up there were very excited for it, so, okay, great.
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
So the question here is that the additional money will be put to the symposium?
We received the money in fiscal year 24, but it wasn't a part of our original fiscal year 24 budget. So it's to accept those monies from fiscal year 24 so we can spend them in fiscal year 25.
Do, at the symposium, do they talk about cannabis-induced mental illness or schizophrenia?
Not specifically. We don't tackle specific topics such as that. It's more generalized.
I'm going to make a motion that it be denied.
Motion to discuss. So if we deny it, what happens to the money?
We'll have to send it back because it was sent to us. We just can't spend it until the board approves it. And then it is earmarked for the symposium, so we would have to cancel our speaker.
How much money are we talking about?
$54,750.
All right. So is it, would it be too late if Supervisor Gould, you know, wants it to be used? Because it can only be used for certain things, not like it can, right? And that's one of them.
Yes.
And so for maybe, this is a little late this year, but maybe for next time, the next board can change how they want it, they want it to be spent?
Absolutely. If there's more funding, we were told this was a one time. The 146,000 that was originally approved, but obviously we did receive more monies.
Because it would have to come back to the board if you were to change it. So what's the timeline for the money?
Through the end of 2025.
Oh, so it could be if we wanted it to. 54, okay. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? For denial?
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes.
I may have missed it. Who are the attendees at this symposium?
It's a combination of professionals in Mojave County, so behavioral health and mental health professionals and the general public. Oftentimes, we have individuals whose families have been touched in one way or another with mental health or substance use issues, and so they attend.
And then the purpose again is to plug them into services or?
It's referrals, resources, and then education. There's always an education piece. So one of our speakers will provide, it's usually a personal experience. And then our last speaker, our keynote speaker, has some sort of educational component.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Any second? Okay, motion dies lack of a second. I need another motion.
Motion to approve.
I need a second. I will second that. Motion in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries four to one. Number 26, approve and sign amendment number three for sex offender treatment services. Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Once again, I'd like to know what we're doing here. Yeah, I got sex and drugs.
Had to check that it's still morning. Good morning, Chairman. Supervisor Gould. On this one, I don't see that there's someone here from probation or the courts, but essentially procurement was contacted because these are, I believe mandated services that have been provided. We've, we've not had multiple respondents to RFPs, and so we have an existing contract for sex offender treatment services. The cost of providing in, in-person services has gone up, as have all costs. And so they had reached out to probation and proposed modifying their contract to allow for virtual meeting attendance, virtual services, so that they wouldn't have to ask for a cost increase. That, that's the best that I can summarize it.
Madam Chairman, Chair, I believe there was something in the backup about homeless sex offenders. How does a homeless sex offender participate in a virtual meeting?
I'm looking at the backup. I don't recall anything about homeless, because they did have a requirement for at least two in-person. So I'm, I'm scrolling through the backup right now, I'm sorry. Because my understanding was it was really only a, a change to allow for the virtual and to do training on how to do the virtual. So I'm looking to try and see where homeless was and see if I can find specifically.
So it's the training or the?
No, it's, it's both. So when you look at the virtual services, it's that they would provide virtual... provide virtual treatment services in lieu of in-person, with the exception of providing in-person services semi-annually, that they would provide, um, or they would have the option to staff cases monthly with the county officers, virtually, with the exception of in-person semi-annually, or any time that they conduct an in-person training, county staff could be there, and that they would provide a two-hour annual training to the department to make sure that they can participate in those virtual sessions. And I'm not seeing anything about homeless in the backup that we provided.
Think I had members of the.
Yeah, I do. Scotty McClure, you want to speak to this?
Scotty from Bullhead. I can give you some addresses. That these people are reporting as their addresses. Aztec Road and Highway ninety-five, behind Safeway. That's their address. Finley Chevrolet Parking Lot in Fort Mojave. That's his address. These people are from out of state. How in the hell did we end up with them? Why are we getting all these people from New York and Florida? Because New York and Florida has just found out that we got three thousand of them down in Maricopa County and, in Arizona, why are they accepting these people from out of state at the parole board down there? They are given a life sentence, some of these people, and what you're doing is just gonna let them phone in? You have no idea. Lee Avenue is full. We got about ten or fifteen people on Lee Avenue in Bullhead. Bullhead's got sixty-one offenders. Kingman, a hundred and thirty-nine. Congratulations, you're the top dog. Lake Havasu, forty-four. Dolan Springs has got six. Mojave Valley, thirteen. Mead Views got one. Littlefield got two. Golden Valley, thirty-eight. Yucca Five, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Adds up to three hundred and forty-four, and we're just gonna, these people aren't checking in anyway. And now you're gonna let them just phone in? And that call of the day, these people that are living under the coverts down there behind Safeway don't have access to phones anyway. So how in the hell are they going to get to wherever the, the place there by Smith's, across the street from them, the probation department? By the way, is that a probation department that meets once a month and have these people go right by the child's section to report to their officer that you guys have at the library? Um, this is just disgraceful. This is, what, virtual? They need to check in and verify their address and their job. I can't believe you're supposed to be having a life sentence, not a little, oh, here now, we're just, no more, don't even bother even showing up. The only time we find out is when they get arrested because they're wandering around the neighborhood. And some of the neighborhood, the last one was, uh, in a pretty nice neighborhood. I don't think the people were real happy down there by that golf course. But, uh, this is just, you're going backwards here. Why are we even accepting these people in the first place? Don't you have any authority to not accept these from Maricopa County? Are we getting any money? Maybe what they should be paying is per person here to have the probation department open, and they report there instead of the library right next to the children's section.
Thank you. Alrighty. Supervisor Gould.
Um, motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny. I would need a second.
Ma'am Chair, discussion?
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure who to address this question to, if there's not anybody here from probation, perhaps Attorney Esplun, but, um. It's not this board that dictates the scope of these services. It's, is it the court's system that dictates these mandated services and how, and how they're provided? I mean, e- even if we agree that, yeah, they should check in, these people, we're not the ones that say that they can just phone in. We're the ones that have the purse string. So who is responsible for making that call?
Chairman Angus, Supervisor Lingandfelter. Generally speaking, yes, you're correct. Uh, the court will determine the terms and conditions of probation or order probation, then probation will work through those terms and conditions. Um, so, you know, we're not here, the board, excuse me, the board is not here to say that they have to do this, that, or the other, but the court will order, the court will order, uh, someone to, to serve a probationary sentence, and as part of the probation, they will have to do sex offender treatment. This here would allow those services to be provided, uh, through virtual means, uh, rather than doing it in-person.
And Attorney Esplun, that, that's, that was the court's determination that that's okay?
Well, probation is recommending that, that the, that the board authorize this so that, uh, there'd be, I imagine, I'm just guessing here, would be greater flexibility for, to provide treatment for the, for the offender.
And if it's denied, they'll have to go back to the drawing board?
Uh, yeah, I mean, they won't be able to do virtual treatment, they won't be able to do ver- virtual treatment. They'll have to look at the, they'll have to look at the terms and conditions of, of, that we have, of the contract, and then be able to work within the terms of that contract.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to den-
Chair, Chairman Angus, this Kip Anderson appearing on the team, sorry, I, I didn't get connected in. Is it okay for me to make a comment?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, my apologies, uh, Supervisor Gould, Supervisor, um, Lingandfelter, um, I, we should have had someone there, uh, from probation to give you a little more information on this. Um, the probation department officers, they certainly review the probationers, they evaluate what's the best way to provide them with the services that are court-ordered. So in this case, they, they would certainly, um, make an evaluation on how to best deliver that service. Uh, so I hope, perhaps that gives you a little more information. This isn't just something that would be done without a review, review of how the probationer's doing, and the proper action that should be taken. So I, we cer- certainly can get you some additional information if there's concerns on that as well. Thank you.
Any questions from Mr. Anderson? Okay, thank you. Supervisor Gould, do you want to postpone this to get more information or, or do you want to keep with your?
I don't know that I ever got a second, so.
No, well, not yet, because we haven't done yet. Wait, we have a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Second. We have a motion second. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Uh, the nays have it, three to two, so I'm gonna need another motion.
Chairman Angus, I'll make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, I'm gonna, twenty-nine is, is gonna be a little bit longer, and there's some small, I'm gonna come back to twenty-nine. It'll only take a couple of minutes. All right, so we go to number, uh, item forty-one, to approve the request to call for the special board supervisor meeting to be held on, uh, August eighth. Supervisor, uh, Bishop asked for this to be taken off.
Yes, I asked for this to be, um, discussed. I have plans to be out of the state on that date. I can do it anytime prior to that. I'll be leaving the morning of the, um, of August the eighth, so if we could make it.
Okay.
Day before, I could be there. I don't need to be there. Um, you'd still have a forum without me, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention.
Um, okay. Uh, county manager, is this something that, it's just, it's to certify the election, to canvass the primary election? Do you think it would be wise for all of us, or does it, um, would be okay if one supervisor wasn't there?
Madam Chair and board members, we have until the twelfth. That's the deadline to get it done. I, I, uh, want to make sure that we have, with the Recorder's Office and the Election Director, that we, we can have it ready for you Wednesday morning as Supervisor Bishop is suggesting. Um, so I am, I, I'm not, uh. Is, Alan, is Wednesday morning, uh, and Recorder, uh, Durst, uh, is what the board asking doable? Can you have it ready by Wednesday morning for canvassing?
I have a conflict.
Okay. That takes care of that. So what would be the next date?
How about, is, is Wednesday afternoon okay with you, Supervisor Gould?
I have a conflict.
Okay, on Wednesday, on Wednesday. Okay. Well, then.
How about Friday? And then she, you can call in, right?
Or do you? Actually, I could, I could try to call in on Thursday. I'll be at the airport, so I don't know.
Think so? Uh, what, uh, with the right, what time is supposed to be held? At nine-thirty?
Thirty.
How does that work with your schedule?
I can call in.
Okay, so Supervisor Bishop said that she'll be able to call in on the eighth, so we can keep the original.
Leave it as is.
Leave it, leave it as is.
Thank you.
So, um, make a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, number forty-five. I took this out because in the backup, the name, one of the names was spelled incorrectly. Um, this is for, to approve the cancellation of the Mojave County School District's, um, of elections and to appoint the people. And in Bullhead City School District number fifteen, you had down Carlene, C-A-R-L-E-N-E Diaz, D-I-A-S, but her name is Charlene, C-H-A-R-L-E-N-E. So I'll make a motion to approve with the, uh, spelling change, the name change.
Second.
I have a question for Alan, since he's down here.
Alan? Stop talking.
Popular right now, but I'm always open after elections, too. Hi.
Alan, do candidates for school board, do they turn their petitions into you?
School Superintendent's Office.
Do candidates for fire districts turn their petitions into you?
They do.
They do, but the school, the school for some reason goes through the.
School Superintendent's Office, yep.
Um, I had an incident that somebody relayed to me that they wanted to run for school board and were told by their school board there was enough people, they don't need them. Um.
Oh, okay.
I find that problematic, but as long as that there's somebody, they call for their own election, though, don't they?
They do. Every entity calls for their own election, and they call through the special districts, call, send me letters, which I send to you all for, you know, to show you what's going on, really, me to say yea or nay. And then they file the paperwork, but the school superintendent's office, they handle, they're the elections administrators, that is the proper term, for the school stuff. So whatever goes on, somebody in, in their, in their midst inside, I have no control of that.
I find it problematic that they call for their own elections, because we've had incidents in the past where fire districts just didn't call for an election.
Very few, but true.
Um, and that led to improprieties.
That's very true.
And I believe it was to cover improprieties. Um, but I'll probably, I don't see, I think Representative Gillette took offer, I was gonna give him a bill idea. Um, they should, I think that the election should be automatic, and then it should come to the Board of Supervisors, like it is today for us to cancel that if there's, cancel the election if there's only, say, three seats and three candidates.
And actually, actually, Mike File, is it on this agenda, or something about canceling elections that where people filed for a whole bunch or?
Right, that's what we're discussing.
Okay, I got him.
Sure, I caught you off guard.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got you, I got you. Yep, so it, it works the same way, that way.
It just seemed, it strikes me as odd that, and, uh, these things come up from time to time, that they have to call for their own election or there's no election and they just coast through.
And it's.
And then after they coast through, there's really nothing you can go back to do about it.
I agree with you. I'll, I'll tell you what. Years back, we, all right. I got on special districts, uh, probably about six, eight years ago, about requiring them to let me know, to let you know that we're having elections. So I got them pretty well-trained. I don't mean of that, like, you know, occasionally somebody doesn't send me something near the deadline, and I say, where is your letter of, you know, election?
Sure.
So I follow up on that group, and I know Mike File is the one who has to control over the other people. What I get from them is, here's the list of candidates who will have to go, who will go to election, you know, the, that, that had more people than could be canceled.
Sure.
I got it. No, no, I agree.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Okay, so where are we at with this?
There's a motion and a second with the modification that you said, for the last one.
Okay, that was what that was about. Okay, we have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, um, is Mr. Befford still here? He had asked that forty-seven be taken out. I didn't see that was hidden behind another piece of paper. I would have done a motion to reconsider, but he is not here, so we will move on. Number fifty-two, appoint Gail Key to serve on the Mojave County Extension Advisory Board for a term of July first, twenty-twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
Madam Chairman, I just thought this was odd. This is the representative for the fifth supervisor district, but apparently it comes, the recommendation comes from the, uh, extension officer. Which I thought was odd that it doesn't come from the supervisor of, of that district. In the fifth district, we actually have farming. So I thought it might be interesting to put that out to some of the farmers. They might want to, um, be a member of that, but I'm not gonna hold this woman's notification up. I just thought it was an intere- interesting, uh, anomaly, once again. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Supervisor Johnson, was that a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Back to item twenty-nine now. To approve the award and sign contract twenty-four dash P dash zero-nine Medical Examiner Services with Serenity Memorial Group, Fort Mojave, Arizona, for provision of medical examiner services from Mojave County for an initial three-year term beginning on December first, twenty-twenty-four, and the option to renew for up to two additional one-year periods at a monthly rate of ninety-two thousand five hundred on behalf of the Public Health Department. Funding for these services will be in accordance with adopted budgets per fiscal year. That's from procurement. I have several people signed up, uh, to speak. We'll start with, um. Let's start with Ryan Swab.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. I first want to say that I really appreciate Morgan Michaels in the procurement office. Um, he's been very professional and civil every step of the way. However, we have a significant disagreement. In the county's RFP, it states, quote, "The medical examiner shall be a physician certified in pathology. No one from Serenity is board certified in pathology, including Dr. Mosley." According to the procurement code, we filed a formal protest. The procurement office responded with our claim, and they said basically, "Well, we said certified, but we went back with the stakeholders, and we didn't actually really mean certified in the board sense. We really meant something more along the lines of general qualifications." And we accepted disqualifications last time, so we can't really say no this time. Um, well, that may have been unavoidable previously, but that is no longer the case. Board certification in a medical specialty matters greatly. In fact, if you are not board certified, you are ineligible, ineligible to practice medicine in nearly any hospital. Board certification establishes a minimal level of competence, which is nationally recognized. Not having this certification disqualifies any physician from the vast majority of jobs in their specialty. And as fiduciaries for the county, you should know that employing a non-board certified physician almost guarantees a settlement when mistakes are made and attorneys are involved. It is not defensible to employ, to employ a non-board certified pathologist. Would you hire an attorney who hadn't passed their bar exam? Mr. Hassett may have been a useful intermediary at one time, but he has no education qualifications or credentials which qualify him for experience in this space. All of his comments and opinions, including his response letter to our protest, must be viewed in this light. There are inherent flaws in this process generally. We are not procuring services for a road or a bridge. Expertise in teasing out qualifications in medical specialties is complex. It is beyond the purview of the county procurement office to make definitive decisions in these matters. In hospitals, there are typically an entire staff in the medical office which specializes in credentialing. It must then fall to the elected officials, the Board of Supervisors, to make this decision. There has been much care with the wording of the RFP. Words matter. The procurement department may not be allowed to change the rules in the middle of the game. This process must have integrity. Mojave County will never have a better opportunity to bring credibility and professionalism to this mandated community service. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, supervisors. Again, I'm in Stang of Fort Mojave, AKA the German. Got a question about the medical examiner. The last contract you had, I understand that the county bought all their equipment, the vehicles and everything, they got to keep them after the contract ran out. Am I right or wrong? I don't know. But I hope this time, when you give out a contract, the county isn't paying for anything, they have to bring their own equipment in. All I have to say. Thank you.
We cannot respond right now, but we will after. Kristin Leets Lights, I'm sorry.
Oh, it's a consent agenda. My name's Erden Johnson. I'm from Lake Havasu. I'm thirty-two years, or twenty-three years in the funeral industry in California. I'm living in this great state of Arizona, second generation, retired here. My passion for this industry goes way back. I've served the state of California on their licensing board, the law review board, and their examination reward. I have done some looking into, you might say, state law, and that is State Statute eleven. It's outlined, but the only person we can give a contract to is either a medical examiner or an alternative medical examiner. He is the head of the medical examiner's office, not a person that is listed as the chief of operations. Now, I took, out of fifteen counties in the state of Arizona, we are the only county in the state that does not have a contract with a licensed medical doctor or alternate or is on the payroll as an employee of the county. We are the only one. Now, I spent a lot of time in the profession. There was a person that Buster Johnson, I'm sure has known, out of LA County Coroner's Office, Scott Carrier, if that rings a bell. He was the captain, and he was the public information officer. He was responsible for the program we just purchased a year ago, which is one that he helped write, and it took five years to develop. He wrote this program for one reason. To help coroners and public agencies get grants and public funding to help. I have seen this program get funding in multiple areas of health departments. I have seen it work in public works. I've even seen two counties, one in California, one back in Kentucky, that this program actually got federal grant money to build them a coroner's office without a penny to the taxpayers. It is my recommendation that we tear, we do away with this contract. Let's set up a line item in the county budget, so if they need equipment, they go through the county proper channels. Let's go out, we've had our, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
But in closing, I just want to say, go to a professional headhunter, we've had years to find a...
Okay, thank you very much.
One, and that's all I have to say.
Ben Peterson? No, I'm asking, I'm getting the next guy up.
Supervisors, Ben Peterson, Yucca, Arizona. I'd like to speak to the apparent corruption in the medical examiner's office. Detailed in a police report, Mr. Hassett uses medical examiner's staff and vehicles to transport bodies to funeral homes he has a financial interest in. This appears to be a conflict of interest. The medical examiner is apparently not performing blood tests during autopsy. Is this an attempt to hide COVID clotting or fentanyl deaths? What did the pathologists have to say? Apparently, there's not one involved. Why weren't community members involved in the procurement contract? And according to vital records, there are three thousand seven hundred thirty-nine, two thousand twenty-three deaths, yet the medical examiner numbers show something amount, two thousand two hundred and forty-two deaths, that's nearly fifteen hundred missing from the report. Who's going to explain this incredible discrepancy? And given this, in light of the concerns, no board certification, why was Mr. Hassett given the contract back? And speaking of the contract, who wrote Mr. Hassett's contract? Did he write it himself? It's quite lucrative to get half a million dollars' worth of equipment just given to you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, we'll have more to say about that.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Three years ago, we were in the same place, and at that time, standing here, we were told by Tara Acton that this was a temporary situation, that they would continue in the procurement office to look for a more qualified answer. In fact, it is even written in the contract with Serenity. It says, from the procurement, during the initial term of the subject contract, staff intends to explore multiple options for the provisions of medical examiner services in the future. Since at least July of two thousand seven, the county has only received one response when competitively soliciting for these services. However, that competitiveness did not include reaching out to whether it would be a headhunter or someone else. With limited competition, it is in the county's best, best interest to evaluate the best approach to providing the necessary services. And in this, Serenity Group was also given up to four hundred thousand dollars to buy equipment and to take over the contract, yet that same courtesy has not been awarded to the people who applied alongside of them. They have, they've had their answer with, we have three licensed pathologists that fell in their lap, that asked last year, went to procurement, went to the county manager's office, let them know that they were interested in applying for a proposal, and they were ignored. You have your answer, you have a better option. But again, it had not been placed for proposal until it was brought to the supervisors, to this board, and they were told to go ahead and put it back out for proposal. And that's only because you voted on it. Some of us met with the staff at the procurement office, and we were told that they did use a committee, but it was a confidential committee. It was a committee of five county employees, and that who was on that committee and how they scored and came to their answer was confidential, or in so many words, secret. It seemed like a backroom deal, and the bias in favor of the contract going to Serenity Group is palpable. It seems like that committee was done just to appease the supervisors. There was no community input, and due to the financial decision that procurement made originally, where they gave an extremely large startup fee to the current contract holder, Serenity, along with them allowing to keep the items.
Thank you very much. Daniel Sudoloski? I'm sorry if I pronounced that incorrectly.
Madam Speaker and Board members, I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I would also like to commend the procurement department for the effort in producing the RFP and the very thoughtful and specific language utilized to define the qualifications required to be medical examiner of Mojave County. Specifically, qualifications are defined as, open quotes, "The medical examiner shall be a physician certified in pathology and have experience in forensics," close quotes. To our dismay, it seems that the specific meaning of these words escaped those involved in the evaluation process. These words very clearly demand the medical examiner be certified in pathology, which can only mean one thing, that is board certification by the American Board of Pathology. This is an appropriate standard and is in line with all other counties in the state and nearly universal for all physicians in this country that practice a specialty. Board certification in pathology has been the gold standard for demonstrating competency and qualification to practice in any aspect of our specialty since nineteen thirty-six. All three pathologists in monolith forensics meet these requirements. We were shocked to learn that Dr. Mosley does not and has never had any certification pathology whatsoever. Mr. Hassett not only lacks any of these qualifications himself, but he is also clearly misinformed regarding Dr. Mosley's credentials. The only credential to support certification included in the Serenity package for Dr. Mosley is this diploma from the National Board of Medical Examiners, or NBME. The NBME and diploma, however, are part of the initial medical licensing process for all medical students and residents to qualify for a state medical license. It is entirely unrelated to pathology or functions of the medical examiner. I have the same NBME diploma acquired as part of my initial medical licensing sequence. Consequently, both Dr. Mosley's diploma and mine are actually dated July first, nineteen ninety-four, one year to the day before, after we both began our first year of residency training and many years before we could be certified as pathologists. To represent this as a pathology credential, as Mr. Hassett has done in both his response to the initial RFP and to our protest, is either out of ignorance or blatantly dishonest. This should have been exposed with a simple internet search as part of due diligence. This is far more than semantics. There's absolutely no equivalency between this diploma and certification in pathology. Concluding that these are equivalent could be a very basic layperson's mistake, or frankly, a bold ruse trying to misrepresent Dr. Mosley's credentials and mislead this committee, the committee and this board. The very specific qualifications as set in the RFP requiring board certification in pathology represent the minimum demonstration of competency and qualification that the citizens of this county deserve to instill trust and confidence in the medical examiner's office. We have expectation of integrity in this process, and that not only the spirit, but the very specific language of the RFP would be understood and followed to the letter.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I don't know if I'm going to be able to answer all of those at once, but I'll do my due diligence and try to stay under time. One thing I would like to point out, a couple of statements that have been made, was the initial upfront funding to our organization. It was offered by county procurement in the initial, we declined. I'm not sure where that keeps coming from, members of the public and other individuals that have spoken, but the statement of the requirement for the county to purchase, the contract holder is solely responsible for purchasing all the assets and managing and owning the assets in an effort to manage and fulfill the needs of the contract. I have always said from the very beginning, I'm not a forensic pathologist, never claimed to be. I've, I've said it on record on numerous occasions, and I, in no way, shape or form, claim to, or, excuse me, claim to hold the qualifications that the gentleman behind me do hold. I came into this from a business standpoint, partnered with many well-known forensic pathologists in our area that work for Maricopa County, as well as Yavapai and Pinale and Mojave. You all know Dr. Mosley for many years of his tenure here at Mojave County, serving you. I know that Dr. Swab has provided some, some disagreement with regards to Mr. Mosley's qualifications. I know that he did reach out to Dr. Mosley and request his resume to be part of the bidding process, so I'm, I'm not sure whether it's an issue that he is not American Board of Pathology certified or not. With that being said, when we crossed this bridge years ago, or, excuse me, three, coming up on three years ago now, the county was in a position where I supported Denise Burley at the time, stating that this needs to be a county-owned and operated division, we need to continue to pursue that. I know that we ran into some hiccups. I still support that. The county procurement, as well as the Health Department and many other divisions, went above and beyond to attempt the renewal process, which is what we were here for a few months ago. At that time, the county board, this board chose to obviously go out for RFP to make sure that things were competitive and advantageous to the county, and I respect that decision. The staff worked diligently, many, many hours in this secret committee, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe they just need to put in a public records request to get some of this information post-award. With that being said, there's no backdoor deals, there's no hiding. Dr. Swab's Division of Monolith Forensics came in very close to what, as far as a point ratio, came in very close to where we stood. I still stand by the fact that the county needs to take over this division, they need to be county employees, and I will work through whatever is possible to try to make that happen. I've said it to each one of my contract holders, and, and I say it to this board again. I appreciate your time, I'm also open to any questions. I have a whole lot of notes, but I've got eleven seconds left, so.
Okay, thank you. Before we go, questions, I want Ms. Acton to come up and, and maybe be able to answer some of these questions. We'll call you back if we need you.
Thank you. Do you have specific questions for me? Do you want me to do a summary? And I apologize, my laptop died, so I'm working from my cellphone.
Just a summary of how we got to where we are and what happened during this process.
So I, I think the summary's pretty much been covered, but we did look at multiple options. I was quoted during the initial award of this contract of saying that we would be working towards bringing these services in-house. That question may be better for Manager Elteres to address, but we were working in that regard. And we did meet as county leadership several months ago at this point to say, are we ready to take it in-house? And there have been some things that have delayed us from doing that, which is why the county staff's recommendation was to do a renewal at the time that we brought it to the board. The board directed us otherwise, and so we sat down with all of the stakeholders within departments that have a touch point with the medical examiner services. We worked through our RFP, and we said, what do we need the needs met? Again, with the goal of eventually bringing this in-house. We made some adjustments to the requirements in, in the RFP, and we put it out to bid to give everybody the opportunity to bid. So none of those things am I denying. I think the primary concern here is the qualifications and experience, and those are twofold. So nobody's denying that a group of pathologists that are board certified are not qualified. Nobody said they're not qualified. When we look at the full picture of qualifications and experience in running the entire medical examiner services, I think that is where things are very close with the two offers, but I think that the incumbent has the experience in running the operations, has the experience and, and has investigators on staff, and I just believe that their proposal handled that. As far as the questions about the confidential evaluation committee, that is a county standard that actually Supervisor Lincolnfelter put in place when he was the county manager, or county manager, I gave you a promotion, the procurement manager. That is something that we do to protect the integrity of the process, to prevent anybody who serves on a committee from being lobbied in the future or being targeted for maybe disagreeing with certain things. That's a county standard, and the integrity of the process matters for all county procurements. That's our norm. We will disclose comments, we will disclose scoring, but we do not name the procurement, or the procurement officers, goodness, the committee members. I will say that this was a five-person committee that was made up of executive leadership-level, management-level people in every single department that had a touch point with the medical examiner's office. It is my responsibility as the procurement director to make sure that we have a qualified committee, and I'm confident that we had a qualified committee that evaluated these, and some of them had negative comments about both proposals and positive comments about both proposals. That information is available in the backup for this, so nothing was done in, in a backdoor room, nothing was done in secret. I don't know, I, I hope I've addressed everything. I guess the other piece of this, and I would, I would lean on the county attorney's office for the definition of qualified medical examiner. So the solicitations... So the solicitation specifically required the contractor who manages, give me a moment. I'm reading this from the solicitation. Shall be a licensed medical examiner that will perform forensic pathology services for Mojave County. The medical examiner shall be licensed physician, certified in pathology, and skilled at forensic pathology and be in good standing with the Arizona Medical Board of the Arizona Board of Osteopathic Examiners in Medicine and Surgery. Mojave County will accept proposals from qualified firms with physicians not licensed in Arizona. However, should the firm be awarded the medical examiner contract, the physicians will be required to obtain an Arizona license as soon as one can be issued by the licensing agent entity, sorry. While awaiting Arizona licensure, the physician will be required to work under an Arizona licensed physician. And from all of the backup that we've received, Dr. Mosley is a licensed physician in good standing with the Arizona Board. I hope I'm not confusing some of the terminology. And he does have certifications with emphasis in pathology. We did not specify a particular certification, so I think that might be some of the hangup. And I'd like to ask maybe the attorney to speak through specifically what state statute requires the medical examiner to have to be qualified. I don't know if I missed anything. Are there any other questions?
Say, any questions for Tara? I do have one. I just want you to make sure I heard you right. So there's been some different numbers. People have come up, said that the incumbent had got 180,000, 400,000. Was he given any money upfront for startup costs?
So in the initial proposal, in the last solicitation, there was an opportunity for there to be some startup costs, but through the negotiation process, and because I think there was going to be questions about, well, who would own things at the end of the contract, et cetera, they elected just to charge us a monthly fee over the initial three years. So I believe their pricing is the same that they've offered on this one. It was 92,500, and the Serenity Memorial Group purchased whatever they needed. There were some things that we had existing from the prior medical examiner that they did take in for use, but I will say, a lot of those things were not in great shape, and so they weren't usable. And so Serenity Memorial did have startup costs, but they did not pass those on to the county. They absorbed them over the course of the last two and a half, almost three years, and just agreed that they would recoup them in their monthly fee.
Very good.
I have a question for you, Madam Chair. What does the county own now that you're talking about giving away stuff? Before, we bought vehicles and we bought equipment. Do we own anything that has to do with the medical examiner?
I don't know that I'm the person that's qualified to answer that question, and I can get back with you with some information, but we did take an inventory at the outgoing of the medical examiner when it was Dr. Mosley that held the contract. We did take inventory, and we shared that inventory as part of the initial solicitation process. I do believe some things we decided to offset. Morgan's got the inventory, because we did it again with this one as well. And there are some things that the county maintained ownership of as part of the process, and I don't think that we had anticipated those conveying with the current medical examiner. I just think a lot of it wasn't in the best shape, so I don't know if, let's do this.
I guess my question from that would be, so it seems to be typical that the county buys stuff, and then like in this instance, we give it to the medical examiner's office, and we obviously never follow up to make sure it's being maintained? I guess that's something you can't answer, but it seems that way when you're saying we're just, you know, the stuff that we had wasn't worth anything.
I think it would be difficult to go back that far, and County Manager will probably be able to answer some of this. There were several things that we actually did have to maintain. That was part of the struggle in the last contract. I know both County Manager and I came in sort of at the end of the last contract, so I just don't have as many of those details.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, as we transitioned from the previous contract that was directly with Dr. Mosley to the current arrangement, we went through a detailed and thorough inventory, determined what was working, what was functional, and what was not. And the items that were not working were removed from the list. The items that were working was tagged with county inventory number, and we accounted for those. We did not move anything onsite or offsite. We did not purchase anything above and beyond what was there at the time from the prior contract, but we track what we own and it continued to. And at some point, when this arrangement changes, we will reclaim what is county property and what the county owns. I don't know, I hope that helps answer your question, Supervisor.
Okay. I would like to, if you have any questions? I'd like to hear from our lawyer about the certification licensing issues.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board, Deputy County Attorney Jason Mitchell. I am licensed by the State Bar of Arizona, by the way. All right. So Title 11 deals with the definition of a medical examiner. It states that a medical examiner means a forensic pathologist who performs or directs the, or directs the conduct of death investigations. It then actually gives us a definition of what a forensic pathologist is. That means a physician who has successfully completed a pathology residency and a forensic fellowship, that's the first qualification, or has an extensive experience performing forensic autopsies in an official capacity. It doesn't state anything about being certified or certified by the American pathology.
I have a question, Madam Chair. So you're saying that experience can qualify somebody, but how do we know that experience is good experience?
Well, I'm not saying it. It would be the Arizona v. statutes that require that it has extensive experience. Whatever extensive means, that's up to the board to decide, because as many definitions as they give me, they won't give me extensive. That's kind of up to you guys.
No, you, that's all.
Madam Chair. Mr. Attorney, should the county get sued, does an official request or proposals document have any legal weight in a courtroom? What is officially publicly noticed and posted?
I guess it depends on what we're getting sued for, if it's a procurement issue.
Well, I'll just cut right to it, because we're short on time. So you just read the statutory definition. And what we published in our solicitation on page 5 of 41, under B, and I believe one of the speakers already read it, says the contractor will manage Mojave County Medical Examiner's Office, and the licensed medical examiner will perform forensic pathology services from Mojave County. The medical examiner shall be a licensed physician, certified in pathology, and skilled in forensic pathology, and be in good standing with two boards, the Arizona Medical Board or the Arizona Board of Osteopathic Examiners in Medicine and Surgery. So in our RFP, we write, it has to be a physician that is licensed and in good standing, and it says certified in pathology. And I think there is where the delta is between what is in our published solicitation and what is in state statute. And if I were going to a courtroom, I would try to make a huge deal of that.
And I agree. And I think that's why, I mean, there's two separate issues here. One is, can it be appointed under state statute? I think under state statute, you would qualify. And then there's a procurement issue on what they meant by certified. And so that's just now an interpretation issue, and I couldn't answer that.
And I raised that, because a lot of times, political subdivisions of the state of Arizona in their scope of services will ride in things that they're requiring that are above and beyond what state statute requires, because state statute is silent on a lot of different things. And maybe they want something that statute is silent on.
And it's possible. I can't speak to what was meant by that.
My other question is, maybe for Manager Elters, one of the speakers also said, or they made a statement, I don't know if it's true or not, I'm asking you. They said that we are the only county out of the 15 counties to not have a direct contract with a licensed physician that's certified in pathology. Is that true?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, I have no idea. I can tell you, there are many counties in the state that do not have medical examiner employee onboard, and they reach out to other counties or make other arrangements. I have, I do not know what the other 14 counties in the state do to meet their medical examiner's services needs. I don't know.
Okay, very good. Well, with that, I am sincerely grateful that Mr. Hassett stepped up in a time of crisis, but I do think that this arrangement is still a bit unorthodox. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Any, Supervisor Bishop, do you have anything?
You know, I think we're looking here at the overall best value for the county, and we have a proven procurement process that's been met. We have scores, obviously. Serenity Memorial Group was the choice from the committee, and I, hearing the discussion and everything, I would make a motion that we approve an award and sign this contract for Serenity Memorial Group Contract Number 24P09 for Medical Examiner Services.
I will second that, but we have one gentleman who's not here.
Madam Chair, a discussion?
Discussion.
Manager Elters, the current contract, correct me if I'm wrong, when does that expire? Our current contract?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lincolnfelter, our current contract expires on December 1st of 2024.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Supervisor Johnson?
I have, as I've stated in the past, and I will say that I appreciate Mr. Hassett coming forward to begin with. I don't like the way the deal was done, but I think with all these years, we still don't treat our deceased with any kind of respect. Now, we're having, at least from the reports that I've received and the reports I've read from the law enforcement, back in the olden days when I was doing it, you would go on scene and you couldn't touch a body until a coroner showed up or coroner investigator and said, okay, now we'll release that body. We're doing it now by phones, and I think that's wrong. These deceased need to be there, I mean, the investigator needs to be there to make sure that these people aren't victims of some kind of crime. Elder abuse is one of the biggest crimes around. It's such an easy crime to hide up, especially when you're just looking at a phone, and somebody that passes it around over a body, you know, maybe the guy doesn't show the part that's, that could be an attack. I believe that our people aren't getting the autopsies done in a quick enough time now. My understanding, they're only being done one day a week, and there's only a certain number of those that are being done. And then when law enforcement has a murder or some kind of a case that they need taken care of, that takes precedence, so things get put back. I've had calls from people who are trying to get their loved ones so they can have a funeral, and it's delayed two and three, four weeks. The investigation that law enforcement conducted, the conclusion was that after numerous interviews and lengthy follow-up investigation is parent, there is validity in the allegations made by the funeral home businesses in Mojave County regarding the Emmys Office. There is documented misuse of equipment and personnel. More importantly, it raises questions about ethical procedures and practices conducted by the contractor, John Hassett. An in-depth review of this administrative practice and documents would best, would at best answer these questions. For those reasons, I won't be supporting this.
Supervisor Johnson, can you tell us again, what, when was that report, when was that report issued?
When was it issued? It has, I'm going to spread out all over the place.
And while you're looking for that, I'm going to ask Mr. Hassett to come up, because there have been some accusations I'm sure he wants to address.
Prior to Mr. Hassett speaking, I just want to clarify, the current contract actually expires November 30th. We'll need something in place December 1.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a source of activity dated 2/12/24 to 15/24.
Okay, so at the beginning of the year.
January 24, yes.
Okay. Do you want to address this, these complaints?
Yeah, I see what he's referencing, because I understand what you, first off, I want to cover a couple of things. I have in front of me the inventory of all county-owned items, as well as the county identification number. Your staff is extremely diligent in doing an annual audit of the inventory. It was done at the onsite inventory was completed, and then annually, whomever my boss is currently, Melissa Palmer, she coordinates with me to lay eyes on all those items, and I sign off on them. So you do have a considerable amount of assets that are currently in service by the medical examiner and owned by the county that transfer. In our initial bid, I also made a statement that all assets that we acquired at that time, the county would have the opportunity to take over those assets at the culmination of the contract. So if you would like any further information, I can provide that to you with regards to that. Supervisor Lincolnfelter, you're right, this is a very different way to run a contract, which is why I've offered my time freely to, whether we put together a committee with executive members or staff, like I encourage and implore us as a county to take this under in their own division. The, and if you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd like to go back to Ben Peterson's statements, only because, not really for my own benefit, for the benefit of the county. The statements that blood tests are not being performed and autopsy, and that we don't take blood samples, that is something that we do every single case. Whether we take them in-house or not, we will draw blood on scene, we'll send in for toxicology. Pathologists have the opportunity to go for expanded toxicology, send in vit samples, organ samples. I mean, we retain, we have samples that are collected and retained by this office from prior to me in 2017. So I do want those statements on record. That and the fact that I don't own a funeral home and I'm not transporting bodies with county vehicles. Supervisor Johnson, if I may, you said that the statement was regarding autopsies only been, being completed one day a week. You are accurate in that statement. I've never said that we don't do it, other than that. Dr. Mosley, in fact, has always performed services that way, as well as Dr. Worrell, prior to her moving, which I don't know the exact date, but she did move down from Las Vegas. All of our pathologists have lived out of area and travel in. Dr. Mosley does stay for a couple of days and usually autopsies midweek. I myself, and I can't speak for my, my contract manager or the Health Department, but to my knowledge, no one has rendered a formal complaint against my office or the Health Department with regards to autopsies taken in exorbitant amount of time. We've never heard any complaints from any law enforcement that we have, we've, I mean, basically just asked them their opinion. So if there is some items, I'd be more than happy to address them. Obviously, probably not in an open setting, but it's completely your call. If you'd like to email my office, or I can come down to yours, I can pull each case log. We've made massive improvements with how our records are maintained, how our investigations are done. And with regards to your statement of how we conduct investigations over the phone, we're not, excuse the terminology, but we're not just FaceTiming and snapping pictures and sending back and forth. If there's a circumstance in which a, I'll give you a great example, this just occurred over the last weekend. There was a death upon the strip, and we all know how far away that is. It closed down a portion of Mojave County's roadways, and the DPS trooper had authorized us to have a partner funeral home, because for the first time in a long time, we now have a rotation funeral home up in that area that is able to go make removals for us, as well as multiple partner agencies up there, partner funeral home agencies up there. The DPS trooper said, look, I understand how this occurred. I'm okay with you guys clearing it. We'll send you the pictures that we've taken, and these photos and these things that you're referencing, they're done by skilled and trained, whether they're DPS troopers, or detectives, or law enforcement. We're not just doing this for fun with somebody on scene. This is, there's thought and effort that goes into this. Our investigators are currently up in Las Vegas right now, well, they were this morning, excuse me, but with that particular case, it was a traffic fatality. The DPS trooper cleared it so he could open the road. The funeral home's ETA was 35 minutes. Ours was four and a half hours. We are in a holding pattern with regards to staffing. We do currently need more investigators, but I have stopped all hiring based on this unfortunate circumstance that we're in, because how can I go to someone and say, I'll give you a job for 90 days, but after that, it's a roll of the dice, buddy? We have looked and recruited, attempted to recruit numerous people up in the strip area. We've had some contacts up there. It's just, it's a little bit challenging, but it is things that we try to pursue and would like to pursue, given the opportunity. Did I, I'm sorry, did I miss anything of those items?
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Hassett?
I want to make sure I addressed Supervisor Johnson's.
No, this is a law enforcement report, and I guess any kind of questions wouldn't go to me, they would go to the Sheriff's Department. Well, thank you.
Just know that I would be more than happy to come down to your office and address those concerns on that particular case. Yes, Madam Chair?
Anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Maybe I shouldn't say it, but I'll say it anyways. I remember the last time we were here and we did the original, and I appreciate your comments, Mr. Hassett, and the fact that we should put together a committee and figure this thing out finally, because all we're really looking at right now, and I don't mean to be dismissive or disrespectful, but this is sort of a Band-Aid solution towards an ultimate long-term solution, is what I see here.
Absolutely.
And I wish that the county would have put together would have put together or taken this time to put together an executive committee or something to figure out a way to finally solve this. I mean, I know that there's been a lot of talk about the medical examiner and the morgue aspect of that, but, uh, and I know that we're getting kind of off topic, but I've heard from K R M C where, you know, they have a space where they do autopsies and there's been some talk about maybe co-locating. I don't know if that's, that's legal or not. But, um, I just don't see any of those options being explored, explored. And I, for one, would just feel better with my read of, of statute to have a direct contract with, with an actual doctor.
Okay. Um, you know, so we are where we are because we have put off building that morgue and doing it together. And so if we have another contractor come in and invest all this money for their own sake, then what are we, what are we going to do down the road with that? Um, I would hope that we take the next, it's gonna take a little while, putting together, and Mr. Hassett said that that was always the, the end, the end game for them is to make sure that it's all okay for them. And he was willing to do this. So and I just also want to say, I want to thank Dr. Mosley, his, his name's been brought up here and sometimes in not a very positive manner. And he has been a fantastic uh, asset to us here in Mojave County. And I just want to set that on the record as well. Um, and I, I appreciate him working with us. And again, it all comes down to the business side of this ME because that's what it, that's what we're talking about right now is some, a group that hasn't done it and now the group that has and now working with an ME. It's a lot of semantics as far as I'm concerned. But, um, I do understand that we do need to figure this out once and for all. I mean, I won't be here, uh, but I'm hoping that it will be a priority for our future boards.
So, Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, but if I may, just say one last statement of Supervisor Linganfelter. Your staff, the, the county staff and my contract managers, they were extremely diligent and continue to be extremely diligent, um, all the way back to the beginning with Denise Burley, when the county decided shortly after the award of the contract that they were going to find the land, allocate the funds and, and we, in, in all of our monthly meetings, we talked about what does this look like, what is needed? Um, when Dr. Kingsley took over, it had become more aggressive in the aspect of what does this plan need to look like? What do we need to do? Size-wise, what do we build? Equipment-wise? So although a committee was not formed and maybe that is the best decision going forward, what we need to do, but your staff members, uh, continued, were in the past and continue to be very diligent in that aspect. Well, we just unfortunately lost the funding. That's kind of how this all came up to it. Um, and Melissa and I spoke at our last, excuse me, Ms. Palmer and I spoke at our last meeting with regards to, hey, this has got to become a county thing. How do we do it and how do we do it right? And then one last item, there are other counties, many small counties, many other counties that have, I, I, I wouldn't say that they're identical to this model, but in the circumstance that they don't have a forensic pathologist. Your statement was, I would like to be contracted with a doctor. Well, just for reference purposes, if a small county such as, I don't, maybe Coconino or something along, or that's a bad example. They have their own morgue and it's beautiful. So take, I take that back. But if a smaller county was to, um, do a cooperative working agreement with Yavapai or someone along those lines, if they lose their county or their forensic pathologist, they'll be in the same circumstance that we will if Dr. Mosley chose to resign from my organization or anything along those lines. So I understand your need and your want to have a contract directly. If I was an M D or a D O, it'd probably be more appealing to you and I totally understand that. Um, but in those circumstances, like Yavapai County losing their pathologist, I mean, it was handled by outside doctors traveling in to go to their facility. So any situation can occur with regards to that, but I do understand and respect your decision with regards.
Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Hassett.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and we have a second. I think we should take a roll call vote to approve the contract. That's right, you were right.
Supervisor Linganfelter.
Yeah, I'm gonna explain my vote. I, I believe in the integrity of the procurement process that was done. But I think that this is, is just continuing to kick the can down the road in, in a way that, um, I'm gonna use my vote to try to a little more emphasis on finally getting this solved. So I'm gonna vote no.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Um, before we come up with a new, uh, motion, would it be easier for the no votes if we made it a shorter contract and then we kind of forces us to work faster to, to take it in-house and do everything? Because if you're talking about taking it in-house, I, I don't see how giving it to, still another one is gonna, is gonna move that along. It's just out there. So what do we do? What's the motion?
Chairman Angus. I'll, I'll take a stab at it.
Don't have to terminate a contract that doesn't exist.
Make a motion that we extend the, um, or that we sign a contract for just a one-year period with Serenity Memorial Group, uh, allowing this board more time to work on a solution.
Can we do that, Tara?
Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, I might be speaking out of turn, Chairman. Um, one thing that we could potentially do, we have an existing contract that is fairly similar to what we are recommending award to. My recommendation as your procurement director would not be to reverse or try to change a decision that went through a vetted and, and substantiate a procurement process. And so if you take action not to award the new contract, a possible path forward be, would be direct staff to work with the existing contract and pursue an amendment of a year or two years. That is, we had brought a two-year renewal to this board several months ago with the idea that those two years would give us the time to figure out how to at least start moving down the path of bringing it in-house. So just one possible contract method to go forward.
Madam Chair. Three years ago, we were right in this room trying to figure out a path forward. Uh, we had different options. There were three in particular. One was to, um, bring it all in-house and have a morgue. The other one was to have a hybrid where we had, um, some services, the admin services in the county and the, um, pathology or the medical examiner portion of it done by an external. And the third was to have the current contract arrangement that we have. We went back and forth. We looked for a morgue location. Um, we went through multiple iterations. The board finally approved one, but we could, we were not in position to fund it. So we continued to not have a, uh, a plan to build a morgue. With that said, um, the, the issue is not just the medical examiner services, but it's also investigators, technicians and admin. And that, um, we looked at potentially bringing that in-house in, in the iterative process that we considered, but ultimately decided we did not have the time or the resources to do it. It takes a lot of training and certification to go along with it. Um, and we were having especially throughout the county, but especially in public health, we were having hard-time staffing and, and being fully, uh, staffed. So, uh, you know, we find ourselves with, we, we met with all the departments that are pertinent to this mandated service. We communicated to all interested parties that we continue to look for options and to, to provide Mojave County residents with the best service and the most economical way we can. And that whether we do it this year, next year, or the year after, we continue to pursue those things. Um, we, we, uh, reviewed the options after a meeting. We did not ignore anyone, contrary to what you heard. We met with every interested party. We communicated where we thought we needed to be and what, what these services mean, these mandated services to Mojave County. And landed on, after reviewing what preferences, what priorities, what positions we were receiving, we came to the board with a recommendation to continue. The board saw an opportunity for competitive process and directed staff to resolicit. We have resolicited. Our process is what we use with every other contract. The, the accuracy of it, the confidentiality, and as I, as, as, as important as it is to point out to you, every department that touches these services was at the table when we refined the request for proposals before we sent it out. So the integrity of the proposal is maintained, the integrity of the process is maintained. We have two proposals, we evaluated them. And at the end of the day, we're making a best value decision based on what is in the best interest of the county residents and the most expense, most um, cost-efficient way to provide these services. At the end of the day, the, 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 the recommendation that is made to you is based on the understanding that the incumbent possess the certification needed and uh, offered these services at a cost that is best for county residents. With a vote of no, we have to ask where, where, where do we go from here? Um, these, these types of, of services takes a long time to ramp up for and to position for and to train for. And we've done what we could to, um, position ourselves to provide them, uh, again, in a cost-efficient manner. So it, it really leaves us, leaves staff in a position of, okay, what, what, what exactly does the board want to do and where do we go from here? Because the process itself, um, worked as it does in every other solicitation process.
Um, Mr. Elters, when is this contract over with Serenity?
It's November 30th, 2024.
November 30th.
2024.
And what's today's date?
August 5th.
Yeah. So we're talking about a very short period of time. And I don't, I don't know, uh, what we can do, the rest.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, Tara, how much time elapsed between the vote to give the contract to Mr. Hasslet to Mr. Hasslet taking over operations of the medical examiner's office?
In the initial award?
Yes.
I don't, I can look into it and get that to you, but I
That would be handy information.
I have a really good memory, but it's not that good.
Not that good. Thank you.
Um, Madam Chair and Supervisor Gould, what we ended up doing is we, we directed Dr. Mosley at the time to go on a month-by-month basis. We reached out to both counties, Yavapai and in Coconino, if you recall, in the transition to cover those services. And we extended it to a point where we, in, in consultation after the award, after the Board of Supervisors awarded the contract, we, we made sure that by the time we awarded the contract that the provider was in position to carry on this, these services. Uh, Kara will provide you the dates, but I, I, I did want to reflect back on what we went through and the fact that we wanted to make sure we kept the existing contract. We ran it on a month-by-month basis, which is a provision, was a provision of that contract to ensure that we had those services until the newly awarded contract by the Board of Supervisor was, was executed.
Madam Chair. Well, isn't that the same contract we have now? I mean, isn't it the medical examiner just can't walk out and leave without a medical examiner? So if this board goes past January or past November, they just go on a month to month.
Um, um, Madam Chair and Supervisor Johnson, you're right. We do have a provision in the current contract that will provide for that, uh, option as well.
And, and we do still have renewal options within that contract of up to a year or portions thereof. My vote would be to take a renewal option and figure out how long that would take if, if we went that route rather than being stuck with a month-to-month arrangement.
Madam Chair. Uh, I would be willing to support, uh, a, a renewal of one-year renewal under the current contract. I mean, to come with us to this board, this is just my opinion with, this was always supposed to be a sort of a, a temporary fix, but to come with to us for another three-year period of a temporary fix, to me, doesn't make logical sense. I'll, I'll support a year, an additional year to start figuring some things out. And the conversation on the morgue has always been, we gotta build a morgue, we gotta build a morgue. Why not rent a building? Why not, uh, partner with K R M C? Why not explore items like, or things like that? You know, it just seems like we have this tunnel vision where we have to build a new facility and I don't understand that either. So, thank you.
Hey. Do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
We do.
Oh, you did. Okay. Repeat what she said.
It said, um, she stated, motion to sign a contract for one-year period with Serenity Memorial to allow more time to work on a solution.
Um, before, and, and do we have a second?
No.
All right, we need a second on that.
I'll second it.
Chairman, can I request that it be to amend the contract, not sign a new contract? Otherwise, we end up in a position where we're trying to possibly sole source.
Madam Chair, we're, we're talking about two separate contracts here.
That's correct. Supervisor Linganfelter's talking about two different contracts. We don't have the other contract on the agenda right now. It'd be improper to vote on one that we don't have in front of us.
Okay. So it may be a matter of
You can bring it back in two weeks. You can bring it back in two weeks.
Okay. What is it? What's the motion?
No motion.
No motion.
Just to bring it back in two weeks?
Let it go and they'll bring it back.
So a couple of things, there is a motion on the, on the floor for, uh, to extend, to, to award this contract with, under a one-year term. That's one. The other idea that is not a motion yet, but an idea that Supervisor Linganfelter had perhaps, or, or one that the procurement is suggesting is to amend the current contract. That is not on the agenda today. So if you wish to do that, you could bring it and agendize it in two weeks or the next available board meeting and do it at that time. So you could take no action today. You would not award anything. Um, and then you could then bring it back or you could bring an amendment to the other contract if you wanted to, the next board meeting. That's certainly doable. I, I would recommend if you do that, though, we would bring back this contract, but then I would also suggest that staff bring back an option to amend the current contract.
I was gonna
Have that on the agenda as well.
I was gonna seek clarification. So is staff Is staff enabled to start working on a potential amendment? Or do we need to wait for the board to direct us to do that?
I think you can just bring it back if you want.
Thank you.
But, but it sounds like she just added that to the motion. You want to continue this, but also bring back the current, so basically there'd be another item, bring back the current contract with the opportunity to amend that one.
Yes.
We need a, a second on that.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and, and second, any further discussion?
Can the clerk read the, the motion?
So the motion would be to to continue the, the motion would be to continue this item for two weeks to come back at August 18th or 19th, excuse me, to allow for one-year period with Serenity Memorial. Is that about? Nope, I'm off.
Madam Chair. Uh, I think it was to, to continue the item that's currently agendized and to bring a new item with the current contract with Serenity or a possible one-year renewal. That's what I seconded.
Okay. Okay, we got that. Are we clear?
Before we vote, I've got a question for Tara. Tara, how long can we go on month-to-month under the existing contract?
I'd probably need to look at it a little. I mean, it really is, at least in the last iteration with Dr. Mosley, it's month-to-month in order to make sure that we can provide the services. Um, I think the problem with month-to-month is that's, that there may be some pushback on what those charges are, where if we say we're going to do a renewal term, we cover all of that in the renewal. So my recommendation is that we would move forward with a one-year renewal. We would work as we needed to. We still have a one-year renewal option or the potential of a month-to-month beyond that.
So the contract So the contract does not state the price for month to month?
No.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Plus, I, I think that the vendor needs some clarity going forward and his employees, everyone needs to know. So if it's a year, it's, it's a finite thing, and it's actually not fair to just say month to month. Gives them a lot of uncertainty.
And I think that's why there's no pricing locked in is-
Yeah.
It hurts their ability to hire and retain.
Right.
Madam Chair, I have a question for her. Wouldn't it be counterproductive if we did it on a month to month and they gouged us for money and still wanted the contract?
It would be.
That's a question, yeah.
Is that a rhetorical question, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes. Supervisor Gould said that.
Okay, anything else? We do have a motion and a second. No. All right, let's do a roll call for this as well.
Aye.
Supervisor Johnson?
No.
Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Supervisor Gould?
No.
Chairman Angus?
Yes.
Three to two passes.
Okay, we need a break. I think about 15-minute break.
It's lunchtime. We've been here three hours.
Okay, you want to do a half hour? It's the best I can do, half hour.
Well, I'm not going to be back in a half hour.
I got lunch.
We are now into the public hearings part of our meeting, number 62. I'm opening the public hearing. Discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisor ordinance number 2024-11 and amendment to the Mojave County ordinance number 201803 will include changes to the automation fee to accommodate the increased cost of automation services in Mojave County. Do you have some people signed up? Chuck DeShazer?
Yeah, Chuck DeShazer, Topoc, Arizona. I've looked into this issue, and I know I only have the three minutes, so I'm hoping to get it all in. But talking to Scott Holtry on this issue, we're spending $300,000 a year on EXCEL program, and that we're also spending $70,000 over the last three to four years for a consultant to teach us how to use this program or help us with it. And I looked into the number of permits that have been pulled each year, and we're averaging about 2,500, which equates to $100,000. And so no matter what we do, we're going to run into a big, big hole with this issue of trying to pay for $300,000 per year software with only $100,000 coming in to cover it. And if you look at your background information, a lot of things, they're blowing smoke at you that just doesn't make sense, such as on the spreadsheet, they're talking about spending $7,100 a year on ink, and the whole purpose of this is to go totally digital. We heard Mr. Elters talk about it. It's taken us 10 or 12 years to get to a digital thing on our time cards in this county at the last meeting. On top of that, we're looking at the fact that the entire process that they used here was flawed due to the fact that it specifically states in the Building Code Advisory Board Foundation documents that they are not to make a decision yea or nay towards any administrative part of the International Building Code. A fee or a tax or whatever you want to call it is an administrative end of this code. So it went to them on April 17th. It was the only item on their agenda. They spent more time giving gifts to Tim Walsh on his leaving rather than what they're there for, and they're unpaid volunteers. So you get a whole group of guys together to sit here and hear something, but they're the experts, and then they pass it on as the experts to the Planning and Zoning Commission that goes, oh, well, if they approved it unanimously, we must approve it anonymously. And so they don't even know what they're looking at. And on top of that, it doesn't say in the Library Advisory Board that they're not allowed to look at the information. So if we want extra eyes on it, send it to other boards that don't have any kind of expertise or anything on it. Thank you.
Thank you. I have, well, Steve Robinson, but he doesn't seem to be here. He left. Okay, come on down, Jennifer.
Jennifer Esposito, First Runner Up, 3211, East Navally Avenue, Kingman, Arizona, despite what my, the guy that beat me's family says on Facebook about where I live. So anyways, I agree with Mr. DeShazer that part of the problem is the process issue and whether or not this advisory board has any authority to weigh in on these types of issues. And it does seem to be a problem where it comes from them to planning and zoning. And I've noticed that a lot of people in planning and zoning really don't understand their role in these things. They go, oh, well, if it wasn't unanimous, then I guess we should go for it, too. I sat through a lot for it, too. I sat through a lot of these planning and zoning things. But the monetary issue is of serious concern. I mean, either they've learned to use the software by now or they haven't. How many years are we going to take a financial deficit on this program? And is there really a use for it? I believe that Mr. Holtry told Mr. DeShazer, oh, well, you know, if someone's replacing a water heater, then they can just send us a photo of the water heater, and we can just make a determination based on the photo they send us. That's absurd. First of all, then, why do we need inspectors if everyone could just upload a photo? And second of all, I don't know very many people in Mojave County who pull permits for water heaters. They usually just call a handyman and keep their mouth shut. But that's just my personal opinion and belief. But so the reality is, is what function does this really serve? If it makes physical inspectors a moot point, and if so, then why are we spending money on it? You know, we know that the complaints are down. That frees up more personnel. So I think that we really need to take a good hard look at development services, at code enforcement, and all of these things, and figure out how to save the taxpayers some money. And I think that this should not go forward, and I oppose it. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak to this? Anyone? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board? Okay, Scott, beam him in, please.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the board, good afternoon. This is an adjustment to our Development Services automation fee. This fee was established in 2005. What it covers is the cost to operate, first, to get the software and to maintain that software. One of the main drivers of the software is our EXCEL program, which operates all of the permits that come through Mojave County. This software has been with us for over 20 years as well. And the fee that was implemented to maintain this software and the hardware that's involved with it has remained unchanged since its adoption in 2005. With that, we've seen an increase in the software maintenance, mostly because it was an on-premise service, and then they recently made it go to the cloud. Just to give you an example, our portion of the EXCEL software, we were paying $91,000 in FY '23, and then in FY '24 with the migration to the cloud. It has now jumped up to $175,000. It is an integral and very important software that we have to be able to process all the permits that come through the county. I believe Ms. Esposito was speaking to some of the other software that we have as well. We do have an app that our inspectors are able to use in the field to do inspections, but also allow smaller inspections. If you don't actually have to be there, if you just need to see the, that the work was done and it was completed correctly with a picture taken or a video, that is software that we are, that we have purchased and that we're continuing to pay for. That's a smaller price tag, but the large one is that EXCEL software, and we've seen those increases. What Development Services is proposing is that we change the fee, the fee that was established in 2005 was a $40 flat fee for all permits. That's including your residential permits as well as your large commercial permits. The proposal that we have created is that we change that from a flat $40 fee to a 3.5% fee. What that will do is it will keep the residential permits roughly the same. So if you're coming in to get a single-family residential permit for a 1,500 square foot home, the automation fee would remain around that $40. But if you're coming in for Myers Distribution, which was an establishment, a commercial establishment that came into the county, their permit is around $43,000 with the county, and that would equate to around $1,500 in the automation fee. We believe that this would be more equitable across the board with those larger projects requiring more of the software that we are using. And so by creating the 3.5%, it makes it so that the commercial developments that are coming in are paying, having to pay more than just that $40. But the residential permits that are coming in will stay roughly about that same price. With the proposed changes, it will allow this automation fund to continue to pay for the software that we have and the progression that we've made as far as going to online permits, and have a slight, just a slight increase over the years to be able to accommodate for continual increases. Every year, we'll see increases from software maintenance. I think that's inevitable, inevitable that we'll see those increases. With that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Holtry?
Thank you, Madam. There we go. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Scott, why do we have an automation fee that's broken out rather than it just being incorporated into the building fee?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, back when it was established in 2005, what was explained at that time was that they did a cost analysis of the cost that it takes to be able to process a permit administratively. So the time that it takes for a permit technician, the plans reviewer, the plan reviewers, and everybody that is involved in that permit, and that's the cost of the permit. But what they didn't take into account was the cost that it takes for us to maintain our systems as far as the software, as far as the hardware. So our monitors, the plotters, the scanners that we use to be able to process permits. And so back in 2005, they developed the automation fee to help offset the cost of that software. And we've been using it ever since, and it's served its purpose until we see now that the fees are being increased as far as the maintenance for these software packages. And so we're going to, we would need to make a change ourselves.
But why not just incorporate the fee into the price of the permit? Why break it out separately?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, I do believe that is an option that we could proceed with. I believe at the time when they implemented it, I think they also wanted to be able to progress the automation process with Mojave County and Development Services. So some of the fees that come from this automation fee also go into improving the system. So if by, a lot of the, like Mr. DeShazer mentioned, we did spend some money on a consultant through this fund to help us get our permits online. And so I think that was part of the process of creating the automation fee, is that it's going to help us move forward with automation, but also help cover those costs. I do believe if we wanted to revisit our fees for Development Services, we could put them into the actual fee for the permit. But I believe at the time, they were looking at just trying to cover those software costs, but also advance the automation process.
So on a water heater fee, there's a $40 automation, a water heater permit, there's a $40 automation charge currently?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, I believe for a water heater, it's less expensive. We have, anything that requires a permit fee under $80, it's just half the cost of the actual permit. So a water heater, I don't believe is over that $80. I would have to go check out what the cost of a water heater permit is. But if it's less than that $80, then it would just be a half the cost of the actual permit.
So that it'd be, if it was 80 bucks, it'd be 80 bucks plus 40 bucks currently?
That is the current language that we have. Yes, sir.
Interesting. So what's this software do? That seems like a lot of money for software. I have business software that writes invoices, tracks invoices, writes bids, tracks inventory, tracks my servicemen, does a bunch of stuff in it. I thought the $200 a month I was paying for that was outrageous. So I'm kind of curious what your software does.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould, absolutely the EXCEL, so the, specifically talking about the EXCEL software, that is our permitting software. And so that operate, any permits that come through the county goes through that system or that software, as well as any of our code enforcement complaints. Environmental Health has their permitting and their complaints through that software, as well as our environmental quality department has all of their permits and processes through that EXCEL software. It is quite expensive. Just on our own, I believe staff has, we've been looking around at other counties, what they use. A lot of them have used the EXCEL in the past. I think the reason why we're with EXCEL is back when we first started with permitting software, it was called Permits Plus, and EXCEL Purchase Permits Plus, and ever since has increased the price ever so slightly. They're probably one of the biggest software, permitting software firms out there. There are other options. We're, we are entertaining those other options and looking around. I think regardless, this fee has not been updated in over 20 years. And just to kind of give you, I guess, an example, we currently are recovering all of our costs on permits with the amount of work that goes into them. I think we did a fee update in 2018, and at that time, it's, it looks like when we were adopting those fees, that it's about 30% cost recovery of the work that's being completed on these permits.
That's weird, because I believe I asked somebody that question back during the Sales Tax Inquisition, and you told me that, somebody told me that we recovered all of our costs on building permits.
I think there, Supervisor Gould, that there is a portion of some of our building permits that are fully funded. A lot of their planning and zoning permits that come through the county, and the work that goes into those are about 30%.
So we lose 70% on every permit that we issue?
That was the study that was completed back in 2018.
Well, I'm going to go back and look at the tape of the Tax Inquisition, and somebody told me that we recovered all of our costs. Because one of the things I was going to suggest is that we go back to quit requiring permits in the rural areas of the county, especially that aren't connected to the power grid. But that kind of blew that idea out the window when I was told that we are already recovering our costs. But thank you, sir. No further questions.
Madam Chair. Director Holtry, this is Supervisor Lingefelter. Supervisor Gould touched on this, and so did you. I did a little research on the EXCEL software, and I'm glad to hear that you're looking at reviewing other permitting software, because as far as I could tell, the EXCEL software is the most costly option on the market. So I think that there might be a cost savings opportunity there. My question is, and I don't know if you have the answer to this either, but how many permits are we issuing on average a year, and how many permits would need to be issued in order to cover the annual cost of the EXCEL software? And is there a delta there?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter, yeah, I don't know if I have those exact numbers. I do know that we are issuing around 2,500 to 3,000 permits a year. With, we did the evaluation on our current fee schedule as far as the automation fee, and how much we are getting, and if it would cover our costs with our numbers that we received last year, and it would not. Just looking at a five-year projection, if we continue with our current fee structure for the automation fee, it would not cover our current needs. And by fiscal year '27, FY '27, we would be in the negative.
Thank you for that, and that's why I bring it up. I think that it would be wise to investigate permitting software that falls in line on a price point with something that would pencil with the number of permits that we're currently issuing, and that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to let you come out once, but please make it short.
I would just ask that you asked Mr. Holtry, when we had our discussion, how much money he said this 3.5% because he didn't say it here. He told me 25,000 a year, which doesn't sound like it's going to cover very much of the software. Thank you.
Mr. Holtry, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, just looking at our five-year projection, if we did the 3.5%, and I believe where Mr. DeShazer is coming from, we did have a sit-down conversation. And if you look at our projections for the five-year projection of what the fee increase would allow us to do, the carryover number would increase by about 25,000, 20 to 25,000 each year, which would allow us to be able to maintain the software if increases continue to come.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
From Mr. Holtry.
Okay, guys.
What's $25 grand?
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Oh, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair.
Oh.
I was looking at Laura for a second. Sorry. It's been a long day already. Madam Chair, I'm not sure if it's allowed, but I'd like to say that I'd make a motion to approve. But am I allowed to add a condition that we request Development Services to investigate other permitting software and bring that back to the board? And the reason I make that motion is because in my mind, it doesn't make sense to buy the Cadillac system if your annual cost isn't being covered by the number of permits that you're issuing every year, and there's far less costly permitting software solutions out there. That would make, that would make it pencil a little bit better, you know, so we wouldn't have to worry about doing something like this.
You want to put a timeframe on that?
If I could just jump in real quick, what I would suggest is to continue it, because if you approve it, we'd approve it in an ordinance. And so approving an ordinance is much more difficult than to modify it later. I would continue it, get the information from Development Services, and then you can determine then if you want to approve the ordinance or change the ordinance, or whatever you want to do. So I would just continue it so they can get the information you need.
I'll remove my motion. Maybe someone else can...
Madam Chair, Supervisor Lingefelter and Attorney Asplin, I think we're speaking past each other here. I think what we're, what the recommendation is to approve it, and you're asking your directing staff, or in your motion directing staff, to consider other software out there. We agree with you, Supervisor. It's already sort of underway, and we will continue with it. But honestly, the preference is to approve this as presented. It has been in the work for months. It would be great to approve it so we don't fall behind, and then allow us to look at other softwares, what they offer, how suitable they are to our needs. And as you know, changing from one system to the other could take some time. So instead of rushing anything, if you would approve it, and then we can give you reports every three months, every six months, as to how we're progressing versus just kicking it down the road, because it has been kicked down the road some, plenty of time.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we send this back to staff and have them investigate more cost-effective software programs.
Okay, we have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there. Number 63, I'm opening up the public hearing, discussion and possible action to approve the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution 2024-158. This is an amendment to Mojave County General Plan from a light industrial land use designation to a general commercial land use designation. This was recommended approval by unanimous vote by Planning and Zoning. There's no one signed up to speak. Anyone? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number 64, I'm opening up the public hearing. This is a rezone of Assessors Parcel 306-07-126A. There's no one signed up. Anyone want to speak to 64? You do? Okay.
My name is Christopher Stinson, owner of 113 South Hebrew, which is where the, the rezone is being commissioned for. Just wanted to say thank you, all the way through the process of, of the building going up, the whole process was, was done very well. I mean, I got very, no hassles throughout the whole building, the whole process. We are a very, very, very fast-growing collision center now. I can't say anything other than that that's success. I just want to say thank you, guys.
Very good. Thank you so much. Okay, anyone else? 64? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Chairman Angus, I would like to ask the gentleman that just spoke, how it came to be in violation? Was it, was it just disregard for the ordinance, or?
I believe it was a, a phone call from somebody who, like, moved. Made the phone call and then moved away.
So was it complaint from?
Yes, it was a phone call complaint from a neighbor. And then I did find out who that was after the original meeting. And they just moved. They made a phone call and then moved. And it might have been because of one of the, one of the pets went over there, and I had to go get the pet from them back. And I, I really don't have any idea what the problem would have been with them, where we're at doing what we're doing. It's a beautiful place, if you guys know of it or seen it. I, I live there, obviously. I have a four-bedroom home on the property as well. I have to keep it in a very, very great manner and shape for people to want to drive in. And oh, this is where I'm going to have my car worked on. Absolutely. I have 99.9.9% of my customers walk into my company, my, my house, my, or not my house, but the company. Wow, guys. This is how a shop should be kept all the time. And I, I just don't see why anybody would ever complain about what we're doing. We keep a very run clean, tight ship where we're at.
Thank you.
I, I have heard that. But there was one letter in opposition. I don't know if that was the neighbor that moved away.
I was unaware of a letter.
It was from Mr. Pruitt.
That would be one of the neighbors. I'm unaware of the letter.
Okay. Okay. It was, it was in the backup material. So I was just wondering if you were aware of that, or if there was a way you could remedy whatever his, his complaint was.
We have never spoken on the matter at all. I was unaware of a letter or anything on the matter.
And reading his letter, he doesn't really say what his complaint is, other than it is in a residential area, is on the.
Correct.
Residential.
And there, there are definitely ways to work through that, that I'm, like, options. I love options for the neighbor, of course, the neighbors. I have a north door on the building that is towards the house in his house. I could literally put a note on the door to my technicians. You leave that door shut during business hours. It does not need to be open at all, unless I'm pulling cars in or out of that door for some reason, which would totally quiet down any, I imagine it would be sounds, if any complaints, would be sounds, obviously, from doing bodywork. There are options around that. I'd be willing to put up a wall in the future, things to make sure that he is not being imposed. I do not want my neighbors being imposed. Never would I ever want anybody to be imposed with something I'm doing. I have never had him come over and complain. You know, I've actually come over and visited a few times, and didn't have no complaints. I don't know why he would now. But there's things I'd be willing to do to help the matter and, and keeping the company going forward. Because we have grown. For me to have to shut down and move, after putting up a 40 by 60 commercial building and a, you know, obviously a paint booth and the facility, it would be, it would be big. I would do it. I'm not going to stop from the community. And I say that on a community standpoint. We are helping so many people and elderly in the valley stay on the roads safely, not just on the roads, safely, after a collision with their vehicles. We do need, we need a place out there. We are that place.
I agree. And I, I've, I've heard all good comments about your business.
Yes, thank you. Me too. That's why I have the courage to come here today and, and stand here and tell you guys. I mean, one complaint is one complaint. It doesn't mean I'm going to ignore that complaint from the neighbors. I absolutely tell my employees and my people, you guys absolutely respect my neighbors and all that. But in terms of growth around me, there can't be much, much more. I'm in a little area that's already kind of already developed. I can't see there being that big of a problem with anything. I mean, I have had no issues. He hasn't came to me personally. If he ever came to me personally, I would tell him, hey, don't worry, we're going to find a way to take care of it. That's just the way I am.
I know there are advantages with living where your business is, especially when you're in a rural area like that. So I do, I do appreciate.
Yes, we run a great service for the community. It is an outstanding service that I have built for 25 years. I've been doing collision repair. And, and I just thought there was a better way. And unfortunately, I'm doing that out of home, which is a little bit different for collision. But it's just, we are running so smoothly.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Can we hear from Scott? Let's see if there's anything more that we need to know about this before I make a motion. Scott?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop, one thing I would just add is that this is adjacent to other commercial properties right on the 68. And that's why we, as staff, were recommending approval. And the commission has recommended approval as well. One thing that we will require with this approval is a site plan to be done. The site plan does require that the adjacent residential properties would have to be viewed obscured, whether that's a block wall, fence with slats, or other materials that would meet the requirement. That is a requirement that we'll be looking at when he submits his site plan.
Thank you, Scott. And the applicant is shaking his head, acknowledging that he's willing to do that. So I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for setting through this long meeting.
Spend your morning with us.
Okay, number 65, I'm opening up the public hearing. This is the approved, approved the adoption of Board Supervisor Resolution Number 2024-161, a rezone in Golden Valley. Anyone wish to speak to this? I think there's anyone left. No, I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now it's to the regular agenda. Number 66, discussion possible action, approved comments to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission opposing the preliminary permit applications submitted by Gravity Storage LLC for the Red Lake Pump Storage Hydro Project.
Motion to approve.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 67, discussion on possible action, acknowledged receipt of public petition pursuant to establish approximately 3.44 mile section of East Cali Lucera from North Stockton Hill to North. Avenue that Verde is a county highway.
I have a question for Mr. Lutowski.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm looking at a map of the street that's being discussed here. The applicant lives about halfway down the street on Cali Lucero. I'm just kind of curious why, why we're carrying a total of three and a half miles when the applicant obviously lives maybe a mile and a half, two miles in. Can you give us a little background on this? I mean, we want to declare it a county highway, and then we'll be spending county funds on it. So, so that's my concern is, do we, do we see the need to take it the entire length? Or would it be effective for the neighborhood to just go half that?
Question, Madam Chair, Supervisor Bishop. Staff took the, took the petition from Stockton Hill Road. It was written from Stockton Hill Road, quote unquote, east. And what we represent is what aligns with the existing extent of the road in the maintenance system as a gravel road.
Toward the, the further out you go, the less populated it is. There's not very many residences on that road.
Supervisor Bishop, that is correct. It does dwindle as you head further east. The logic would be to align the, the consideration of a county highway designation with the entire extent of the maintained section. But of course, the board at a discretion, if we do carry this forward to a future public hearing, and it becomes palatable, I could scale it back as well.
It just seems to make sense to me, if we're going to do it, to take it to Bank Street, because we're getting ready to pave that all the way through. So that would be a good thoroughfare where the people out there could use it to access either Stockton Hill Road or Bank Street. But taking it even further, I'm not sure that makes sense to me financially.
Supervisor Bishop, there is logic in just stopping at Bank Street if the overall concept is palatable to the board when they, if the board were to consider this further.
Director Lutowski, isn't this the state statute that says if somebody asks the engineer, that the engineer shall go out and analyze it?
Chairman, if I can jump in, I believe you're correct. If I remember right, I can double-check the statute, but I believe that is something that.
So it's not really, it's, we're not approving the project. We're just saying, send the engineer out, because state statute says send the engineer out.
And I'll add to that, and setting a public hearing. I remember the statute. I'll, I'll double-check it right here.
Okay, any, anything else?
Chairman, if I can just correct the date, it says September 9. The meeting would be either September 3 or September 16. Would be the Board of Supervisors meeting since 19. Would be either the 3rd or the 16th, if you decide to set a public hearing for this.
Okay.
And just to answer Supervisor Gould's question, that's correct. It's, on finding the petition, the Board of Supervisors shall direct the county engineer to make a survey, set a date for a public hearing, give notice of the hearing by advertising once a week for two consecutive weeks in a newspaper of general circulation.
Okay.
It's a shall.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve. Just, just realizing that that'll be something we'll bring up at the public hearing again.
And what's the date of the public hearing?
Um, September the 3rd.
Right. Okay.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that an opposed?
Yes.
Okay. That's for the one. Item 68, discussion, discussion, possible action, acknowledged receipt of and further public works of petition to Mojave County Board of Supervisors with precedent at West Borough Road from North Eager Road to North Alfreda Road located in Golden Valley area, a distance of approximately 0.37 miles, be accepted into Mojave County road system for regular maintenance.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
Second.
We have a motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 69, this is from our Chief Financial Officer, discussion possible action to adopt the FY 2024-2025 tax levies and rates from Mojave County Tax Authorities. Mr. Mornian.
Chairman Angus, board members, be happy to answer any questions. But this is another item that is a shall. The statute that covers it basically says that the board shall levy these taxes and acknowledge the levies that are set by the other jurisdictions. There's 81 tax levies in the backup. Only four of them are directly controlled by the board.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Motion to sever.
Yes, this is the, the moment that we always make a little grand stand about how we shouldn't make.
Actually, this is not, because they've wrapped the two things together.
They did this time, didn't they?
So they.
Still working hard on us.
Because you could still vote yea or nay on our own taxes. The shall is on the special districts and the school district.
Okay. Well, they wrapped it together.
If we wanted to sever those two issues, we could.
Okay. Well, I don't want to sever. I want to vote on it. So.
Motion to approve.
I need a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just one question for Mr. Mornian. In the backup, you're showing that most of the rates have gone down. Is that correct?
Supervisor Lingefelter, can you say that one more time?
You're showing in the backup that most of the rates, that you concluded a comparison between fiscal year 2015 and fiscal year 2025. And you're showing that four, or three out of the four rates have gone down. Is that correct?
Supervisor Lingefelter, that is correct. The rates have gone down over that period of time. You can see in the next column over, though, that just because the rate actually went down, doesn't mean that the levy has also decreased.
We all know the math. Yeah. Appreciate it.
It's beating me to the punch now.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay, number 70, discussion possible action to approve the following exceptions to general fund hiring freeze approved on August 21, 2023.
Approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 71, discussion to direct staff to move forward submitting legislative proposal to amend ARS 36-136.01 to the County Supervisors Association.
Approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 72, discussion possible action to approve and adopt amendment of two Board Supervisors Resolution establishing a remnant road restoration program by private entity participation.
Let's get an explanation on this.
You want an explanation? Come on down.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, I do have a short presentation, but I'd rather be succinct in the, in addressing your questions and providing an overview. In November of last year, under Resolution 2023-215, I brought before the board my firsthand, my firsthand observation and recommendation that approximately 5.9 miles of county maintained roadways in the Northern Valley Vista area were in a state of disrepair. These were roads that either had previous surface treatment on them, chip seal, or even some asphalt concrete, but were missing sections of those surface treatments in many areas. Some other roads were literally void of, of that surface treatment. And they were in what I would call an obliterated condition. And then we also found about 0.8 miles, only 0.8 miles, that were virtually non-existent, or literally non-existent. I brought this matter before the board at that time and recommended a resolution to remove those 5.9 miles of the roadway maintenance system. I did that for the purposes of our Highway User Revenue Fund reporting that we do annually to the state. We make a report based on the roads that are accepted for maintenance under our road maintenance program. And the state uses that information, the total number of miles, in calculating the HRF distribution to the various counties. There is a provision in Arizona Administrative Code whereby another county could challenge a county's report. And knowing that we had roads that had not received the level of maintenance that they should have over the course of many decades, it was prudent to take that action at this time, at least in my recommendation. These roads were accepted in 1981, or perhaps a few of them actually in the 1970s. They were 42 years old. The way by which these roadways were accepted in 1981 were such that the resolution, the accepting resolution set forth that they shall only be maintained to a surface treatment only. And then there was a, a statement in the resolution by which the county may, may spend public funds for such maintenance. These roads were in an area that were adjacent vacant properties, actually up until the present day. The roads that were removed were just abutting vacant properties, but now developing properties. They did affect over 500 lots and over 250 individual property owners. With that said, and knowing what the previous resolution had directed in terms of accepting these roadways, I put together, and in presenting for your consideration, an amendment to that Resolution 2023-215. Nothing would happen if the amendment were to go through. However, it does provide for a private entity to bring in either aggregate base, or namely asphalt millings, the millings of which are available at no cost through the yard, so it would just be a hauling process, and prepare a road base by. However, it does provide for a private entity to bring in either aggregate base, or namely asphalt millings, the millings of which are available at no cost through the eight-yard, so it would just be a hauling process, and prepare a road base by which public works could come in and perform that surface treatment, meaning a chip seal treatment. Right now, we cannot chip seal the existing state of these remnant roads. The other option, and we place this as well as the amendment, is if individual property owners, you know, would remit a, a fee, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per lot, or an escalator of twenty-five dollars in subsequent years, per year, public works could perform that hauling. That would, that would reimburse the county for its costs to haul the milling. So essentially, by having this private entity at their own discretion involvement, the Public Works Department can carry forward with maintaining these roads in such a manner that we are still only providing maintenance and not construction. Right? We just need that, that, that surface, that base material to provide for just the maintenance. So that is what, you know, I recommend to the board for your consideration in concept of an amendment. So what I mean by nothing happens overnight, the roads that have been removed out of the maintenance system stay out of the maintenance system until each road individually, by way of a discretionary move by, by private entities or individual property owners on a road-by-road basis. If those roads were presented to the county public works in such manner that they can be chip sealed, public works would carry forth with that chip seal, and then that roadway or roadways would come out of the maintenance system, and it would come back into the maintenance system.
Madam Chairman, Director Lutowski, so would you wait until the people of the, of the block paid that fee? Or are you gonna, if the guy pays his two-seventy-five or whatever it was, does that mean we're going to come and dump a load of millings in front of his house?
Excellent question, Madam Chair, Supervisor Gould. We wrote a process by which the roadways would have to be either paid for or the millings hauled for a whole roadway, and we wouldn't do it on a lot-by-lot. But we did define so one person could just pay for the, the entire roadway, two-seventy-five, two-hundred-and-seventy-five per lot, or work with his neighbors. We just wanted to put that option available because we know that there's just individual property owners that maybe have this interest. And most of these roads are of rather short length as well, so.
Supervisor Johnson.
We took them out of the maintenance system. What do we care? Why are you doing this? If they can form an improvement district, they can do it themselves. You're asking like, we're going to be the daddy over this thing. We took it away from you. Now we're going to say, well, if you do this, then we'll start coming back in. Isn't there a process where they have to go through and get permission from the board later on?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, this process, you know, streamlines the overall effort. What public works needs to see is a base, a road base that it can actually apply a chip seal, and this pathway, the restoration, delivers that, that very, that very concept.
But if we wanted to go to where Supervisor Gould lives, he has to form an improvement district, and then we take it over. Once he brings it up to county standards, you're saying they can just come in and do a little surface, and then you're going to come in and do the chip seal.
Supervisor Johnson, the remnant roads have largely been laid out to an appropriate width. It just is that road-based material that needs to be placed, so. It, and, and given the fact that there's an area where we have, you know, the potential for some developing properties, it, it really is something by which we're basically putting forward a plan by which, you know, we can make, you know, something happen, you know, for, for this particular area in, in, in a, in a way that we, we satisfy the previous acceptance some decades past.
Madam Chair, Supervisor Johnson, real quick, go ahead. I defer.
Let me ask Supervisor Linganfelter what he wants to say.
Yeah. This, this is my district, and I think the reason that you've come up with this is because these roads were already, they were actually in fact incorporated into the road maintenance system in nineteen-eighty-one. Yes. And I don't know, we just don't have the institutional memory. Nobody seems to understand why there wasn't any maintenance done on these roads during that time.
That's correct.
So this affects five-hundred lots, a little over five-hundred lots in Val Vista, which is in my district, two-hundred property owners. A lot of these are, are owned by a, a major residential contractor in the community area called Angle Homes. And I think this is who this, this fee is going to fall on, this general contractor, and they're just going to wrap it into the price of the house. And I think that Mojave County, it's in the best interest of us because we're going to get a lot more in property taxes from those new homes. So I think it's a good idea.
Do you still want to say something?
Madam Chairman, I think Supervisor Linganfelter made the point, which was these were in the system, were accepted at one time.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else? Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-three-Dash-Two-One-Five.
I need a second. Second. We have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries three to two. Seventy-four, we've already taken care of. Seventy-five, discussion possible action to direct, I didn't do seventy-three. I missed that. Receive legal advice from Mojave County Attorney's Office outside legal counsel. I believe that we're not taking any, any action in this.
Our office does not recommend taking any action on this.
Okay. So now we'll go to seventy-five, discussion possible action to direct staff to move forward with submitting a legislative proposal to the CSA.
Chairman, Chief Deputy James Schottman wanted to briefly talk on this subject, if you could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Schottman assigned to the court somewhere?
That's true.
Didn't get on this in anything?
It's okay. Why don't you proceed?
It's that important. Thank you. Chairman, Supervisors, I, I want you to know whether you support our version or not, this has to get before CSA. Mojave County has the first case. We did the first case where someone was determined to be incompetent and not restorable. Generally, when someone's incompetent and they can be restored, our office makes the decision whether we'll pay for the restoration. The Arizona State Hospital costs a little over nine-hundred dollars a day. We, we don't do that very often. We contract with Yavapai Restoration. They're roughly a third of that cost. And once in a while, we do some, send somebody to Yavapai Restoration. But Mojave County, we did the first case in the whole state of Arizona. Everybody's watching. Everybody's waiting in the wing. And essentially, we have somebody that in Bullhead City attacked their stepfather, stabbed him through the bridge of the nose, through the air, horrific. They're not competent. They are, at this point, cannot be restored. And so traditionally, what would happen is potentially a Title Thirty-Six would be initiated. Providers that do Title Thirty-Six are great. This is not meant to be dismissive of them, but it's just not good enough for the situation we're in. Title Thirty-Six has very little oversight by the court, and a lot of times, people on Title Thirty-Six get released back into the community in very short order. So we went under this new statute. We had a jury trial where the jury decided not guilt or innocence, but dangerousness. And the jury in Mojave County found that he was dangerous. And now what's happened is the legislature has created this statute. I think it was a good idea, but it's not exactly clear. And so now there is no residential facility designed under the statute to accept this person. So this person sits in the jail, and we keep getting challenges. We filed a motion to compel access. The statute, there was an implication, an argument that perhaps we could convince the court that access had some duty to try to assist. I know that sounds odd, but that's how the statute was written. The revision that failed in a Senate bill, and I did seek the help of our legislatures. They tried to get it passed kind of at the last minute on the, the budget, but it, it didn't work. But now we actually have two. I'm not mentioning the second one because it's, that case is not as serious, and, and the guardianship will probably work in that case. When I say probably, my predecessor before me for almost thirty years guessed right. I'm telling you, I'm not that lucky. Meaning, I've been doing this for eight years as the chief deputy, and we make dollars and cents decisions and things like this, whether they will restore somebody or what we'll do. And then we, that educated guess, hope that that person doesn't do anything else in the community. And, and it's just too risky in this particular case. And so I'm, I, I believe you're going to support it, even if you don't. This version will essentially say, well, you don't have this facility, but you can also place this person in the state hospital. It's a temporary fix. It's not great, but this issue is a huge issue. I can't express it enough. I'm asking you, whatever you do today, do something tomorrow, too, because Mojave County is leading the way, and, and we've had some help from others, and other courts are backed up, and they're just waiting to see what happens. And it's, it's a very dangerous situation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Has, has your office reached out to other county attorney's offices, and are, and are they going to be supportive of this as well?
Chairman Supervisor Linganfelter, Maricopa County Attorney's Office actually helped us in this particular case and filed an amicus brief, which is, in twenty years I've been doing this, I've never seen an amicus brief in the Superior Court level. They helped us. My understanding is they're the ones that helped champion the Senate bill that failed last, last session. And so we, we do have support of something needs to be done because it's just not clear. Now, I don't know that all the counties agree as to what needs to be done, but right now, it, it's not, we've done what we can do. The courts have ordered that he go to this place. I have a, an email from an attorney with the governor's office. We're asking to speak to the governor to see if there's something that, I, I mean, we're just desperate. Something has to give. But we, we have general support. My understanding is Supervisor Linganfelter, is that when they pass this bill, they made it so it wouldn't become affected for some period of time. That'd end up being January this year. But at one point, they had one vendor who had interest in becoming licensed to provide this service. For whatever reason, they pulled out. And it's my understanding from my counterparts in Maricopa that the, the funding that was kind of earmarked didn't get spent that year, and then, of course, it was swept. And many of you understand that process better than I do, but right now, there's, there's essentially no, no room at the end. And if this person gets released, for example, this morning, after this item is placed on the agenda, there's been another challenge to the Supreme Court of Arizona, rid of habeas, essentially saying, hey, Mojave's held this guy too long. They have no answers. He's sitting in the jail. That's a violation of due process. Let him out. His home is in Bullhead City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this, this bill that you want us to champion, it's not going to affect your situation right now with this guy. So you think this guy's going to be let out in Bullhead City?
I, I unfortunately believe that at some point, our Superior Court, there'll be a point where something will have to give. We're, we're fighting and fighting. I think at some point, there, he, he will have to go somewhere. And, and that could be, to the public fiduciary's credit, we also, the state also petitioned for a guardianship, knowing we could run into this. The public fiduciary has worked tirelessly to try to find alternative options, but there's, you know, where can a guardian place somebody that's as dangerous as this? That's, we're doing what we can. But right now, no, but eventually, I don't think they're going to let us hold him indefinitely. No. And, and we're actually not asking that we hold them indefinitely either, but we, we trying to get the executive branch of the state to, to do something. The statute means and says something, but everybody's kicked the can, and now Mojave literally is holding the bag for the whole state.
Tell me again why he can't go to the state hospital?
The, the way the statute was written, it actually, it actually talks about that the Department of Health Services is the branch that licensed the facilities. And then in the statute as passed, it says that access is to report to the court, legislature, and others. The, how many beds are available, and essentially how the funds appropriated, appropriated for these facilities were spent. And so it doesn't, it's silent as to ASH. And actually, the Senate bill that failed actually threw ASH in there, saying that they can go to one of these secure residential health facilities or the Arizona State Hospital. So it's a, it's an interpretation of the way it was passed, and that's what the, the failed bill tried to do, is throw ASH in there. It, it just makes no sense. Everybody, when you talk to them, says, well, doesn't this, just go to this Arizona State Hospital? You would think so, but that's not the track that anybody's pushing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we carry this forward to the CSA Legislative Summit and support it.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I believe, is there anything further? Not on my agenda. I think this meeting is adjourned.